Having civil grand jury. And it provides a service that is invaluable. And we, uh, we hope to continue to do that to assist in helping grand juries. Making sure we have enough people doing it. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Grand Jury people. Every year, we wait and we are pleased to see that you pay attention to the animal shelter. That's a great service.
Chair, we're ready.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome and welcome back. Can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you report out from closed session, please?
Yes. Closed session for today, February 25th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. We'll move on to staff announcements. See, we have our...
This is Danny. Good morning, everybody. Lisa McHenry, Shawna, with Animal Services and Environmental Management Agency. Today, we have Danny. It's me, a cutie pie. Do you ever really like his little blue boat? Danny came to us on December 12th. He's four years old. He's neutered, a pit bull mix. He's good with other dogs and has had very many successful playdates with other dogs. He's very playful and loving and has lots of energy and he can be easily trained. And he's a little sweetie. So this is Danny. And I do want to announce that all the dogs that we have been presented before you folks have been adopted. Um, so that's a good thing. And we have commitments. So, um, this is working. And so, oh, Bailey. Bailey is the one, the little rottweiler that we brought in. She needs the FMLO surgery, which we need a big commitment from someone that's going to give her...
Lisa, how old is he?
Four. Four years old. Want to add it to the Huberty gang?
No, no, no.
He's a sweetie pie. So we hope to, um, send him to his forever home soon. But you know, that, that misnomer, that pit bulls are dangerous and that they're, you know, they're aggressive, that's not always true. It depends on the humans that take care of them and raise them to be the loving animals like he is. We paid a lot of attention to him and we were working in socializing our animals and thinking to our volunteers because we couldn't do it without them and of course, our CCAS staff. So this is Danny. Our next announcement is going to be our CCAS Valentine's Day four-legged speed dating event was a success. It was a four-legged event and it took place on the 15th. Excuse me. We want to thank all those that supported our efforts, including Focus, Skimmy Shelter, CCAS staff and volunteers. And I would especially like to, uh, thank Rebecca Glover and Shawna. They helped organize and facilitated this event along with several volunteers that stayed after their duties in the morning to assist with whatever they can. We appreciate our CCS volunteers beyond words and we could not have done the event without them. It was a successful event because not only one animal went home, but eight animals went to their forever home. One of them was a foster. Four dogs and four cats. So that's a... Oh, the foster didn't adopt it. So that's our, that's our success story. So these are working. We're always looking for events to, uh, host and to get our animals out of our shelter into their loving homes. We're gearing up for more adoption events soon and they will be announced here at the Board Supervisor meetings. Next up, we have our Focus, our first Focus in CCS, pre-drive-through rabies and microchip clinic of 2025. This will take place Saturday on March 8th from 9:00 to 11:00 here at the Government Center. Dr. Mark Hayes will be the attending veterinarian. More upcoming clinics will be held on April 4th, May 3rd, June 14th, September 13th, and October 11th. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Come on, Danny.
Thank you, Shawna. Do we have any other staff announcements? Jessie, yes.
Good morning, Chair Habbity, Honorable Members of Board, Jessie Fowler, Agriculture Commissioner, and most important today, I am the Director of Weights and Measures. So next week, March 1st through 7th, is the 224th Annual National Weights and Measures Week. The standardization of weights and measures started with the nation's second president, John Adams, signing the federal Weights and Measures Law on March 2nd in 1799. This is a perfect time to remind residents and businesses in Calaveras County of the importance of weights and measures in their day-to-day lives. Weighed and measured items include everything from produce to ropes to electric vehicle chargers, everything in between. The mission of the Calaveras County Department of Weights and Measures is to ensure equity in the marketplace and that's both for customers and business owners. No matter where you live or what you purchase in Calaveras County, inspectors from our department work tirelessly behind the scenes to protect customers from malfunctioning devices and unfair marketing practices to make sure you get what you pay for. Last year, our department investigated eight consumer complaints. The majority were complaints about possibly inaccurate fuel dispensers and electric sub-meters. To ensure accuracy, all weighing and measuring devices used in commercial transaction are tested for accuracy on an annual basis by our department inspectors. I encourage you to take this week as an opportunity to notice all the things in your life being bought and sold by weight or measure. And if you have any questions or concerns regarding weighing or measuring devices or just weights and measures in general, please reach out to our offices. I have the, um, the PowerPoint slide up there. It's got our contact information. And just a heads up too, since I've got this space, uh, we will be moving our offices. Right now, we're in the Colombo Building, but, uh, as of next week, we're going to be starting out of Oakview, which is right here at 556 Mountain View Ranch Road. So, or Mountain Ranch Road, sorry. So we'll be a little bit closer. Any questions? Yep. Make sure you get what you pay for. Absolutely.
Thank you, Jessie. Len?
Good morning, Board. Uh, Len DeGroot, Bureau Information Technology Director. Uh, I have a couple of updates for you today. I'd like to start with, um, an AT&amp;T outage that we're experiencing at the county. AT&amp;T had a part in their network center fail. Uh, they tried to replace it yesterday. It failed again. Uh, and so they overnighted a part and they're trying to replace it again today. The, the result of that is that calls going in and out of the county have been blocked. We've lost access to some essential services that we use to interface with the public and including some services at the Sheriff's Department and HHSA. Hopefully, we'll have that up and fixed today and the public will be able to talk to us, to the county, easily again. Uh, right now, they can still contact us through email, uh, and so we're working on resolving that. The bright side to that is that the backup internet that we're operating on now has performed pretty well. As you can see, we're still broadcasting. So we'll take a win where we can get it. Any questions on the outage? No? Uh, the second update I'd like to give you revolves around broadband. Uh, the CPUC has, um, had moved to round two. So what we're doing is we're working with, uh, Barbara Hayes at Golden State Connect Authority. And they're working with Tilson to come up with, um, a new, a new proposal based on the latest availability data. Uh, so our, we're, we hope to have by March 15th, a new proposal sort of underway. And the date for submission, the deadline for submission is April 23rd. Our hope is that this will be a very fast round. Uh, the CPUC has said they want to move it along as quickly as possible. Uh, so, so really, we're looking at that and we hope to have something in the hopper by summer.
I'd just like to add, I'd like to thank Supervisor Follendorf, Len, and Kathy Galeno for all the work that you did trying to get us into round one. Um, and the second question was, do we know whether Monterey got into round one?
They did not.
They did not either?
Yeah. Yeah, and thank you to all of your support for trying to move that forward with the CPUC. Thank you.
Any other staff announcements? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to recognitions and acknowledgements.
Item three, proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, reclaim the month of February 2025 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Calaveras County.
And I'll hand the gavel over to Supervisor Stotter.
Thank you, Susan.
Proclamation recognizing February 2025 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Whereas every year in each of California's 58 counties, 19 ordinary citizens take an oath to voluntarily serve a term of one year as grand jurors. And whereas Calaveras County, one of the original 27 counties of the state, was organized at the 1849, 1850 session of the California State Legislature. And whereas the grand jury is an independent investigative body, operationally separate from the entities and officials they investigate. And grand jurors are officers of the court under the guidance of the Calaveras County Superior Court Presiding Judge. And whereas the grand jury exists through the dedication of the people and they decide what areas of local government they are going to investigate or review during the year. One of the most important functions of the grand jury is to review the operations of the officers, departments, and agencies of local government and special districts. And whereas the grand jury's investigative process may or may not result in reports, those fact-finding reports identify specific problems and provide recommendations for governmental improvement and/or identify commend- commend- commendations. Commendations. And whereas the grand jury is recognized for their dedicated service, volunteering to make Calaveras County's governmental entities more efficient for the best interest of the community. Is there somebody who are representing the grand jury? Oh, the, I know they're all here, but, uh, is there someone that would like to speak from the grand jury?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. This is very short.
Oh, you're not asking a question, are you?
No, I di- I didn't. Oh, right. Okay. Well, we'll leave that there. Ladies and gentlemen of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, good morning. Uh, my name is Vicki Plogger and I am the current foreperson for the 2024, 2025 Civil Grand Jury. Uh, thank you for proclaiming the month of February as Civil Grand Jury Month. As you know, the Civil Grand Jury procedures were written into the California Constitution, uh, through the legislature, I believe you said, 1849 to 1850. And I have 1850. Uh, each year in our county, 19 people plus a number of alternates are selected to serve. I can say that I have been amazed at the, uh, knowledge and talents of these randomly selected residents. It's just been amazing and it's been my honor to serve with these grand jurors last term and this term as well. I would like to thank you, our Board of Supervisors, for your support in the important work we do. I'd also like to thank Judge Timothy Healy, Judicial Support Assistant Louise Boshke, County Counsel Jonathan Frost, Deputy CEO Denise Hubner, Administrative Analyst Candace Doyle, and Deputy Clerk of the Supervisors Stacy Simpson. These employees through the county have made our jobs easier and they've been so supportive. I just can't express how much thanks we have for that. Lastly, I would like to dedicate this year's proclamation to Diane Lloyd, the foreperson from the previous term. Diane passed away in January of this year. She was, uh, was dedicated to all things related to the Civil Grand Jury and she will be greatly missed. Thank you again for this honor.
Thank you. Further comments?
Thank you. My name is Brenda McHenry. I am Vice President of the Motherlode Chapter of the Civil Grand Jury Association. We are mostly, uh, retired former, uh, grand jury members. And what we try to do is to encourage members of the public to step up and become, uh, grand jury members and educate them about what, what we do and why it's important. Um, it's, it's a, it's a unique, it's unique to California, actually, uh, having a civil grand jury. Um, and it, it provides a service that is invaluable. And we, uh, we hope to continue to, to do that, to assist in, in helping grand juries and making sure we, we have enough people to do one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stoughton?
Good morning, Board and Grand Jury people. Every year, we wait and we are, uh, pleased to see that you pay attention to the animal shelter. Um, that's a great service that you draw attention to it. And pretty much after that, um, rarely do we see much of anything that is worthwhile to us. The last grand juror, the last grand juror foreperson came before the Board last year and said, uh, that she works for you, Board of Supervisors. Questions about that one? That's, uh, I know she's passed away and I'm not, uh, saying ill of her, but that's what she said. I would very much like it if they were allowed to. And, uh, you may not know this, but somebody, um, jurors told me that they just weren't allowed to proceed further with a lot of the, a lot of the cases. Um, I've always recommended that in a small county like this, that much like a large county like, uh, San Diego, that they use the services of the State Attorney General to provide the counsel instead of the local county counsel. And I know what you're saying, but, you know, we have a small community here and we'd like our, our fellow, our fellow neighbors. I don't get the rats, do you? We need to actually be more responsible and responsive to the community when it comes to the grand jury. So with that, I thank you for your service and I hope that they do let you go further. Take care.
You have further comment? I'll bring it back to the Board.
I, I want to thank all the members that are here, all the members of the, the Grand Jury. I think you guys do a wonderful job and, um, having a little bit of experience myself, four years I spent on the grand jury. I think it's a good thing here, uh, the Civil Grand Jury. So I want to, again, thank all of you for your, what you're doing and stepping up to the plate and becoming, um, a grand juror when it was reached out to you. So with that, I will make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tom Nellie. This is second by Ms. Follendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes by 5-0. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, does hereby designate the month of February 2025 to be declared Civil Grand Jury Month in Calaveras County and to encourage citizen participation in the grand jury process. Thank you very much for your dedication to the community. We appreciate it.
And now we'll move on to our next proclamation.
Yes. Item four, proclamation, District Attorney, adopt a proclamation declaring February 2025 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month throughout the county of Calaveras.
And I'll hand the gavel over to Supervisor Andal.
Ready for one more? This proclamation is declaring February 2025 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month throughout the county of Calaveras. Whereas teen dating violence is controlling, abusive, and aggressive behavior in a romantic relationship and can include verbal, emotional, physical, or sexual abuse, in person or via social media. And whereas all genders can be victims and perpetrators of teen dating violence. And whereas, according to the National Council on Crime and Delinquencies Focus, one in three adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. And whereas, according to the National Resource Center on Domestic Violence, three in four parents have never talked to their children about this type of violence. And whereas, high school students who experience teen dating violence are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at a greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas, victims of digital abuse and harassment are twice as likely to be physically abused. Twice as likely to be psychol- psychologically abused and five times as likely to be sexually coerced. And whereas, by providing young people with education on healthy relationships and relationship skills and by changing social attitudes that accept and support violence, teen dating violence can be prevented. And whereas, everyone has the right to a safe and healthy relationship and to be free from abuse.
Ms. Yook?
Good morning, Barbara Yook, District Attorney. I want to explain my pants. They're orange because orange is the color of, um, represents Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. Domestic violence affects people of all ages, including teenagers, and that includes teenagers in our county. We frequently talk about the domestic violence cycle and I think you're probably all familiar with, um, you know, the buildup, the blow-up, the honeymoon period afterwards. Um, I don't think we talk enough about, um, what the victims live with through that, which is kind of this constant state of fear and exhaustion that comes with that fear of managing their lives, trying to manage, um, um, what the blow-ups and the, and the buildup and the honeymoon period, what that, um, is going to entail, right? Trying to keep everything calm, keep everybody happy, maybe cover up what's going on in your life while you try to live your everyday life. There's, um, an exhaustion that goes with that cycle that really traps victims because it stops all their energy, right? How do you help yourself when you're constantly dealing with that, um, fear and exhaustion? There is also a layer of guilt and shame that goes with that, right? Um, it's embarrassing, right? How did you get yourself in this situation? People judge victims. What did they do to, 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 um, get themselves in this situation? And victims also feel they must have done something to deserve it, right? There's this guilt and shame layer that goes with that, further trapping victims. With teens, there is an additional layer, right? They've got all of that going on. Plus, this could be their very first relationship. Maybe their parents don't know, right? Maybe it's someone who's popular in school. What are they supposed to do when they're in this situation? So there's that additional layer. Um, but we also see, we call it, in my office, we call it kid thinking, right? Kids, uh, you know, you think that, that kids are relying on their parents, you know, for, for a lot of things and as their protectors. Kids protect their parents. They don't want their parents to be upset. That's a lot of times why kids don't report and kids don't come out and say what's going on. Because kids are really protecting their parents. It's a very interesting dynamic. So teens are going to have that layer as well. That's why I think we don't see, um, as much reporting by teens. We, my office, really doesn't have a big juvenile caseload of teen domestic violence cases. We see them later on, when they become victims later on. Um, we see it years down the road, um, when the perpetrator has found a new victim, um, maybe as an adult, or the victims, um, are in a, a new situation as an adult and they look back and realize, wow, this started when I was a lot younger. Um, and that's what they thought relationships were, right? So we see that, we see it later on. And, um, Karen West from the Children's Advocacy Center is going to speak to you about what they see because they, they have a resource and they help kids even if they're not ready to report. And I think that's really important for people to realize that you can get help even if you're not ready to report to law enforcement. Um, Calaveras County Sheriff's Deputy Scott McNerlin was here, but he had to leave for a call. He is the School Resource Officer and he was going to talk to you about, um, some of the warning signs that he sees, right? Uh, and some of the resources he asked to offer. So I hope I don't misspeak and he can let me know later. But, you know, we think of domestic violence, I think of, especially kids might think of domestic violence as, you know, the punch in the eye and the black eye, right? But that's not what it is necessarily. Um, and that's not where it starts, certainly. We're talking about maybe like a push, right? Oh, he doesn't hit me, it's just a push, right? That's domestic violence. You can't push somebody around, right? So it's, it's a push. It's a grab. It's a, where are you going? You need to sit with me during lunch. Let me see your phone. I want to see what you've been doing. And someone checking your phone, right? And at first, someone might think, oh, you know, they're so intimate, we're so close, this is love, right? It's not. It's controlling behavior and it's a warning sign. Um, and, um, I asked, I queried, um, School Resource Officer McNerlin before we came in. I said, hey, what do you see? Are you seeing the warning signs? Do you, do you see this happening? And he, yeah, absolutely. He says it's happening on the campuses all the time and it is this, um, you know, harbinger of doom, if you will. Um, I'm not trying to be dramatic, but it's that frog in the boiling water. Kids don't realize it. And so I'd encourage parents, I'm not sure how many kids are watching, but I would, I would encourage parents to kind of watch for some of those warning signs, right? And talk to your kids about it, uh, because the stats are really very scary and, um, I don't want to see them later as victims or perpetrators. Um, as far as being a resource on the school campuses, um, there is counseling available. I think Karen's going to address some of that.
which speaks to the risk of future victimization, having experienced this. Out of the 52 teens, 11 of them were victims of sexual assault. Teens who experience this kind of trauma can have immediate effects that include relationship problems, substance abuse, depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts, poor school performance, eating disorders, disruptive behaviors, negative body image, and a higher risk of future victimization. And what is the cost to their future? These effects can follow them into the future and generally will if not addressed. They can follow them to the future relationships, their adult mental health, job performance, negative self-esteem, and continued victimization. How do we combat this in our community? At both the Calaveras Crisis Center and the Children's Advocacy Center, we meet with teens for free counseling, therapy, accompaniment to court, and support. On staff, we have a community outreach coordinator who goes to the schools in our community to discuss healthy relationships. During this time, the classes include small and large group discussion, activities, video clips, role play and handouts, boundaries are discussed, and information is given about helping a friend and where they can go for help. During this 24-25 time period, our community outreach coordinator has visited Oakendale, Calaveras High Schools 9th through 12th grade, Bret Hart High Schools 9th and 12th grade, has participated in Calaveras Schools and Bret Hart High Schools Friday Night Live discussions, and presented information about healthy relationships as part of a volunteer training program. These services and many more are offered by the staff of those who work with the youth in our community. The Children's Advocacy Center and the Crisis Center in a joint effort with others in the community to bring teen dating violence to the forefront of our awareness gives us the opportunity to not only make a difference for teens today, but help change their futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sutton, any further public comment?
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, my supervisor. I was over here, I overheard the conversation when you was there. They were very kind to let me listen to it before the meeting. And one thing I can say about the, our district attorney is she does a wonderful job, but she often brings things before the board that make me come to tears. And this is one of them. And the reason I speak on subjects like this is that even though I've never seen it, been directly affected by it, any extra time that I can give to it before the cameras is time that needs to be given. It's just a part of, part of politics and how you put things out there. And so that is why I'm up here. These are very real. This is a very real problem that should, is addressed, should continue to be addressed, and we should put more effort and resources towards addressing it. So with that, I will sit down and I wish I could give you some more time, but I'm out of words.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? I'll bring it back to the board.
Thank you, Barbara, for all the good work you do and everyone else, you know, representing the teens. One thing I read in here is one of, it says one out of every three, wait, wrong, wrong one. One out of every three females are adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse. That's, that's a long-running statistic. I, I think, think that, you know, I think that it goes both ways these days as I have a daughter in school and talking to school resource officer in the past. Social media's snowballed this situation. It's worse than I could ever remember it being when we were kids because now, now kids write it down what they're going to do the day before. So they premeditate it on social media and then they go, then they're bound to do it because everyone, they told everyone they're going to do it. So then they go in and they actually commit whatever thing they said they were going to do on social media and it's just, I don't, I don't even know how kids get through it emotionally these days. I think that number one and three just for females is not a statistic anymore. I think it's worse because it doesn't just happen in dating situations at all. And it's something we all need to be very aware of, especially with kids or grandchildren and, you know, even the kid next door, you know? If you notice something, reach out and, you know, just let them know you're there to support them, you know? So I guess that's my time's up. So with that, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Oh, and the end. One more heart, sorry. Now therefore be it proclaimed, February 2025, Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month throughout the county of Calaveras. The Board of Supervisors urges all citizens, agencies, and educators to promote awareness about teen dating violence and to work toward ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships and assisting victims in assessing the information and supportive services they need. Thank you.
Good morning, Barbara. We want your picture.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30 minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you, Dana.
Good morning, I'm Dana Nichols and I live at 153 Broadway Street. And I've been talking with my neighbors about our concern about the speed of vehicles going up and down the street. So we wrote up a little traffic calming request and I'm going to read it to you and then I'll hand it to Stacy and we'll take it from there. To Calaveras County Supervisor Gary Toffenelli and Calaveras County Director of Public Works, Mika, or Micah Martin, from the Broadway Street residents. Dear Gary and Micah, we residents of Broadway Street in San Andreas want your help. Trucks and cars often traverse our steep, narrow residential street at high speed, putting us at risk. People of all ages walk on this street, including children headed to school. And some of the speeding cars, by the way, are obviously parents driving children headed to school. Some sections of Broadway Street have no sidewalks. We ask that the county government install traffic calming measures that will slow these vehicles and reduce risk, and we're aware that such measures are sometimes called speed bumps, speed humps, traffic tables, or traffic cushions. And we trust the county engineers can design and install something to improve safety and calm traffic. There's 14 signatures of various street residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dana. Mr. Butner.
Ladies first.
I am part of the Broadway Coalition here, and I am speaking for 10 of our, of our residents down there at the bottom of Broadway and Market Street itself. So what we're looking for is safety for walking. A lot of people walk their dogs, a lot of school, I see more school students, high school, primarily high school students, who are walking back and forth to school nowadays than I think in the past. Granted, I've only lived there four and a half years, but these are my observations and other things that I have discussed with other residents. Also, let's see, we're also, we would like, and it appears, according to residents, that there is a lot more traffic that goes down Broadway as well, as opposed to, and the streets aren't as wide as you would see Church Street or Russell. So that's a problem as well. There is, what we'd like to see is, as Dana said, you know, some kind of speed bump. I think a real quick fix might be the same type of speed deterrent that is similar to the one out in front of the elementary school. There are actually several driveways down there at the bottom of Broadway that have very, very, very narrow broad driveways, practically no driveway at all, which creates a problem with speeding cars coming down. You've got, you have a, our houses are at the bottom of a hill, and so you've got a lot of people just who can't, who are not aware of their velocity and their acceleration as they come down that hill. I witnessed a lot of people just blowing right through that stop sign at the bottom as well. Those are our primary concerns. So we would like to really avoid any type of calamity at this point in time. I understand in the past, there have been some major accidents down there, and thankfully I haven't seen any at this point in time, the four years I've lived there. So thank you very, thank you very much for listening to our concerns.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one more thing. I do have a note, I have a letter from one of our residents as well. This is the, they are brand new in the area, but they have a four-year-old son. Their house is at the very bottom on the, that would be the northwest side. It's the old Dragomontevich House on the corner of Market and Broadway. They really have very little area to park two cars. They have to park one.
Thank you very much.
Pardon?
Yeah, that's your time. Thank you very much.
Oh, it is? Okay, sorry. Sorry. Okay.
You can leave the letter with Stacy if you'd like.
Okay.
Please.
All right.
We can copy it.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Butner.
My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of Calaveras2026election.com. Today's comments to each of you begins with me reading to you the definitions of three words, irrational, rational, and responsible, that you'll easily find in Merriam-Webster's Dictionary of Law. Please listen carefully. Merriam-Webster's Dictionary of Law defines irrational, an adjective, as not governed by reason, mental clarity, or understanding, not governed by a fair consideration of facts or evidence. Conversely, Merriam-Webster's Dictionary of Law defines rational, an adjective, as having reason or understanding relating to, based on, or guided by reason, principle, fairness, logic, a legitimate state interest, or a consideration of fact. I've read to you the definition of irrational and rational. Now I'll finish with the definition of responsible. Merriam-Webster's Dictionary of Law defines responsible, an adjective, as liable to be called on to answer, liable to be called to account, as the primary cause, motive, or agent, liable to legal review, or in case of fault, to penalties, characterized by trustworthiness, integrity, and requisite abilities and resources, able to choose for oneself between right and wrong, marked by or involving accountability. Sheriff Rochelle Whiting, who is usually here in the back of the room, has spent an inordinate amount of her taxpayer compensated time focused upon one particular individual in this community who has freely exercised their freedom to petition the government for a redress of grievances as provided by the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. On August 13th, 2024, Sheriff Rochelle Whiting, in her statement before taking her oath, said, "I believe in upholding the constitutional rights of our citizens, and I take the expectation of accountability and transparency seriously." She then swore a solemn oath to bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and to well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am upon to enter and for upholding the constitutional rights of our citizens. Each of you will be hearing considerably more in the coming weeks and months about these three words, irrational, rational, and responsible. My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of Calaveras2026election.com.
Good morning, Bert. My name is Hardeep Singh. I am a local food systems advisor with the University of California Cooperative Extension, and I'm here to inform you all that we are hosting a workshop, Grape Day, for wine grape growers in Amador County, and the registration is open for all the wine grape growers in Central Sierra and El Grande, Amador, Calaveras, and Duolomi Counties. And we will be bringing advisors and specialists from across the state to talk about different topics such as managing nutrients in wine grapes and then research update on management of powdery mildew disease in wine grapes, and then we will have presentations about vineyard and orchard weed management, and then management of burrowing rodents in wine grapes, and then we'll have speakers talk about grapevine red blotch disease. So, and the registration is open and the workshop will take place on March 20th at Amador County Fairgrounds, and I will leave the agenda here with you. So if you have any questions, you can contact me. I am Hardeep Singh, local food systems advisor. I'm at 423, I am sorry, I'm at 423 St. Charles Street from here. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Singh. Mr. Sutton.
I've come here today just to sit and watch. I am a local food systems advisor with the University of California Cooperative Extension. And I'm here to inform you all that we are hosting a workshop, Grape Day, for wine grape growers in Amador County. And the registration is open for all the wine grape growers in Central Sierra, in El Trato, Amador, Calaveras, and Duolomi Counties. And we will be bringing advisors and specialists from across the state to talk about different topics such as managing nutrients in wine grapes and then research update on management of powdery mildew disease in wine grapes. And then we will have presentations about vineyard and orchard weed management, and then management of burrowing rodents in wine grapes. And then we'll have speakers talk about grapevine red blotch disease. So, and the registration is open and the workshop will take place on March 20th at Amador County Fairgrounds. And I will leave the agenda here with you. So if you have any questions, you can contact me. I am Hardeep Singh, local food systems advisor. I'm at 423, oh, I'm sorry. I'm at 423 St. Charles Street from here. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Singh. Mr. Stotan.
I've come here today just to sit and watch. Jim Jones, the former Calaveras County Council, used to say, "It's the best show in the county and it's free." Well, Jim, we used to spend time together. I liked the guy. Anyway, what, let me give you, I'll get to the point in a, you know, a little bit different way. Take a minute here. A few weeks ago, when I found out I might have cancer, I changed a lot of things in my life and I decided to have more fun. So every day, I gamble. I'd go take a few hundred-dollar bills out of the safe and go down to the rancheria early in the morning, and usually I'm the only one there. And I thought, well, this is a good way to get rid of some of this money. It wasn't. I just kept on winning. And the problem with that is, my mind started working. And I figure, my mind worked on its own. Irrationally, you know, I'm just sitting there trying to do something repetitively and my mind is figuring out how many of this card and that card in the deck, that there are 28 cards with 10, that there are six aces, that there are, you know, six of the other cards, because it's a six-deck blackjack. And pretty soon, you know, it just went, it just kept on winning. It's always between $60 and $100 if I put $200 worth of chips on the table. Then somebody said, "Well, you know, you've also won this $100 worth of chips in our tournament." And this happened again, so I had $200 worth of chips in the tournament. And the way a tournament works is, I didn't know until last week. You put, you pay 50 bucks and give you $500 worth of chips. And so I went and I went to the tournament. Darn it. It was at nighttime and I was tired, but I won first round and then I went to the next round and then it just got to be too much winning. So, I just took all my chips, put them on the table, and played it and busted. And I said, "Okay, I have to live with it. It's just better to be lucky than smart."
Is there any other public comment? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may be, may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Do any board members wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? No? Would any public members like to pull anything from the, do we have anybody online?
No.
Nope? Okay. We have a motion from Supervisor Folendor?
I'll second.
Oh.
Ms. Andal, Ms. Andal.
I think Supervisor Andal beat you to it there.
You gotta speak up.
You gotta speak down.
That's not happening. People have been telling me that all my life.
Are you gonna keep hearing it?
You were one of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass is 5-0. And we'll move on to our regular agenda.
I got some candy for you.
Item 11, informational item. Administrative office, receive an update from the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, we can. We'll take a five-minute break and let you guys set up. Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Chair.
I know, right? This one? No?
Stacy to the rescue.
Okay, there we go, thank you. Okay, so, so basically what I'm going to go over, I'll start with a quick recap of 2024, highlighting our key wins and challenges that we had, and then we'll move into new opportunities we've identified, followed by our 2025 roadmap. I'll also share strategies and initiatives and partnerships that we are helping, that are helping us strengthen kind of our business resources in the county. So, first that I want to think, I wanted to go over from 2024 is that we held large events like the annual dinner, and we also held more personalized events for business needs, like the very specific certify-your-business series. Out of all of everything that we did yesterday, we had over 20 educational workshops and breakout sessions, 12 different networking and community events. With those, we had over 600 attendees for these events and workshops combined, and there were 13 different unique locations used in Calaveras County. About 75% of those took place in the West End as well. So, for basically what we wanted to stress on is the TOT funding impact of what we were able to use from the TOT in order to do this. So, we were able to get access to business experts, create networking opportunities that, you know, provide a community engagement for over 250 Calaveras businesses that were participating. Every business in Calaveras County, regardless of membership, did receive the free marketing opportunities and access to those events and experts too. So, we were able to kind of rework our budget and so our staffing expenses from the original $50,000 TOT was reduced, so we put that money into marketing and events as well for more business outreach. So, room for growth was definitely identified. The picture here is from the very first Giving Tuesday that we held in Calaveras County. It was a packed house and we kind of underestimated the space we would need for such an event, so I thought it was appropriate to put here. So, we identified key areas for growth and new opportunities. There, we're trying to better serve our community and the nonprofits getting them involved was definitely part of that. But we've taken a lot of notes and incorporated it into our 2025 strategies. So, we took direct feedback from the community. We've been doing a lot of, you know, questionnaires and paperwork and things, sending it out to people, asking them what they need from us, and we've been able to kind of build a plan for 2025 from all that information. What we learned from everyone is, these were our most highly requested workshops that we got. We also got a lot of community feedback for different kinds of marketing opportunities and, you know, updates to some of our programs, like On the Right Track, and just new, you know, marketing materials, as well as venue spaces. And yeah, and so it all kind of goes down to the business needs, you know, marketing consultations, personalization within each business, because every business needs something different, different kinds of exposure, education on what is available for them, and then different opportunities and feedback that they can receive as well for improving their own businesses. So we kind of developed some new strategies and they're kind of broken up into like these five main parts. So, for workshops, we already have all of those, the highest requested workshops are now on the 2025 calendar or have already happened. We have planned out our events, you know, all from the big events to Giving Tuesday to, we're working on planning our after-hours. Our next one is going to be on Main Street in San Andreas. So we're going to be calling it like March on Main to try to show the kind of revamping happening on San Andreas. We're working with the Arts Council on that one. And then we're also working on a kind of new directory. We kind of have taken a new strategy to the digital directory and we will be launching a actual physical business directory. We're going to call it the Local Leaper and it's going to have a lot of our little, a lot of our smaller businesses as well as big businesses involved in it. But it will also contain maps and things, you know, it'll be a little bit more than just a business directory, but that will be its main goal. And then as far as involvement, we've already started updating our On the Right Track program. All of the businesses that participate in helping these high school students gain education for when they leave, you know, it can go into the real world, those businesses have been working with us to create new scenarios that, you know, these young adults will basically encounter in their real life. So that's been really fun to kind of see how we can improve that program. And as far as marketing, as always, marketing is always changing, we do have some new initiatives. One of them is a Calaveras-based podcast that we're going to be launching. So, Calaveras Cast is going to be kind of threefold, talking about not only like business resources, you know, from a chamber's perspective, and highlighting businesses, you know, with interviews, but also highlighting tourism locations, hidden gems in the county that might not be known. We can go and interview things like park rangers and things like that to, you know, boost awareness of these locations and it can be broadcast anywhere. That kind of leads into the next initiatives. So, we just had on Saturday our first childcare job fair. We worked with the Resource Connection on that. We, you know, we had recognized that childcare is a big issue in our community. There's not enough childcare providers. So, along with the Resource Connection, we kind of put this event together where it had, you know, speakers, resources, workshops, just kind of things for anyone who either is a childcare provider or who is looking to become one. Connections were made. The Resource Connection actually found, you know, two new childcare providers in the area that they did not know yet, and so they were able to kind of add them to their roster. We also met up with students who are becoming, from Columbia College, who are becoming childcare providers, and they kind of were able to get a roadmap to create a business plan to be launched by, you know, 2026. So that was really exciting to kind of experience. I'm also going to be taking all of those resources, the videos that we recorded from it, everything, and creating a virtual, basically, you know, childcare resource page. So even if you weren't able to come to that event and you want those resources, you'll be able to access the experts, book consultations with them. All of that will be available. And of course, yeah, I kind of mentioned the Calaveras Cast on the last one, so yeah, the threefold thing. It kind of evolves from our Mugshot Monday. There will be interviews, you know, business episodes, and yeah, tourism-focused content. I'm going to go over this kind of just briefly. So, for 2025, what we've already done, we've, you know, we've scheduled the workshops, we have the contract in place for the Local Leaper, we've allocated our budget, we have the equipment and everything we need to launch the podcast, and we have created partnerships with other, you know, like the SBDC, the Resource Connection, Rural MBDA, just to expand our business resources for our community. By the end of this first quarter coming up here, I would like to launch official sign-ups for the Local Leaper. So, we already have 60 on the books because of some membership situations, but I want to launch this also to the public, so anybody will be able to kind of interact with it and decide if they want to take part in the Local Leaper. We also want to release the first episode of the Calaveras Cast. And I would like to collect and organize all of the information that we've been collecting for our directory. We've been doing these kind of business packets and it's a lot of data to go through, but I would like to at least have it all by that point. And hopefully, On the Right Track will be completely revamped by then, which I assume it will. For the second quarter, online directory will be updated. We will have at least three tourism-focused episodes of Calaveras Cast. I really want to highlight the West End, like maybe interview some fishermen talking about catching rainbow trout in Comanche, things like that. I also want to launch our virtual workshop library, so this won't just be the childcare workshops, but I have been collecting and recording all of our workshops throughout 2024, so I want to kind of create a workshop library. So, all of those resources will be kind of permanently available for any business in the county free of charge. The next quarter, I want to finalize Giving Tuesday. Since it was so big last year, I want to make sure it's ready to go by this, the third quarter of this year, with all of the nonprofits signed up, a bigger location, and I'm already working on kind of getting more sponsors and donors, so we'll have more money to give back to the nonprofits. I would love to have the Local Leaper printed and distributed. I want to also produce the first, we kind of want to start these Calaveras commercials where we highlight certain areas of the county and, you know, you go and take a tour of that area, show highlighted spots there, and then publish those, and we can broadcast those online out there, maybe work with some outside TV stations like Visit California and things like that too, to get them to, you know, to participate with us. And I want to do another edition of the Plaid Pages. So that was our little shopping guide. We kind of did a test run of it last year. It was really well received, so this year we're going to try that once again and hopefully it'll, it'll be bigger and better. And then, yeah, fourth quarter, the end, I want to, of course, you know, complete our budget, develop a new strategic plan, and I would love to have by the end of the year 25 episodes of the podcast, and I would have loved to see a bigger output from Giving Tuesday for our nonprofits. So, this is the 2025 TOT allocation. The changes that we've made, you can see, so we are now going more into marketing efforts and that's, you know, things like the podcast and the Local Leaper. We're going to be investing more in developmental opportunities, so more workshops, more resources, you know, grant opportunities, actually sitting down with somebody and having them go over your QuickBooks with you, you know, you can get that free of charge and we're working on creating that. And then also expanding opportunities to connect networking events, big events, right? So we have kind of cut staffing from this section now, and now it all just goes back into, you know, marketing, networking, education. Lastly here, so our partnerships. We've kind of reached out and made connections with a lot of different entities in the area. The SBDC and the Rural MBDA have been amazing, like I said, with getting us experts and those one-on-one consultations and providing, you know, just, you know, access to capital that we didn't even know existed for businesses. It's been great partnering with the Resource Connection, you know, for the things like the, you know, childcare provided. I mean, if we don't have childcare, people can't work. It's just, it's all connected together, so business and childcare go together, so I'm glad that we're connecting there. And then, yeah, the Cal OSBA, we've been doing tours of rural areas primarily on the West End and just promoting, you know, small local businesses out there and trying to get them opportunities like government grants and things. And then, of course, partnering with our other chambers that are, you know, on either side of us. That helps with networking, sharing resources, and it just, yeah, you know, if we have an event here, we invite outside chambers and they show up, they're like, "I didn't even know this was here." And so it just creates visibility for people outside of our community. I mean, we know it's great. Yeah, and so, thank you. You know, we love being able to reach out. We've been able to reach out to a lot of different businesses. These are some pictures of some ribbon cuttings and some Mugshot Mondays that we've done and some interviews with local businesses. And yeah, it's just been really good to be boots on the ground, connecting with everybody and trying to, you know, ask them what they need and then provide it. So thank you for helping us do that.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. You've refined it since your first year, you know, and we appreciate that. Just with the childcare thing, it's not only helping other people be able to make work, it is another business. And it's a much-needed one. There isn't enough people out there doing it. Thank goodness I don't have to go through that anymore. But I'm still getting calls from the parents of the grandkids, so.
Yeah.
Keep, keep getting more childcare people so I don't have to take off work.
Supervisor Habanelli?
Yeah, thank you, Rachel, for your presentation and the board. You guys, I don't really, you guys have been in the west part of the county, you've been, you know, I think it's great. I see you're going to do some more participation from what you're scheduling doing here. I think it's great. And I thank you very much for doing that and reaching out. And I see you only have 60 of the 100 businesses that you're looking for, so you're 40 short. I may be able to help you with, through the VSABA, to get some more participation, at least from the Valley Springs area, the whole greater area there, more sign-ups to get some more of that 100 that you need.
That would be great, yeah.
Supervisor Andal?
Thank you, Rachel, thank you, Zerl. The childcare issue, we all know is huge and I appreciate your networking and expanding that. I specifically appreciate your help with small businesses. I am talking to these people constantly and they just, they need that bridge of how do I navigate things? How do I get up and going and put out, you know, the excellent service they have to provide to our community? So, thank you for being that conduit to them. I love On the Right Track and I'm excited to see what you do to update it. And I have children there that I hope will appreciate it with all the other children. And I would also be happy to help with your sign-ups in the D2 area, so whatever you get, please send our way and we can pass it around.
Yeah, thank you, that'd be great.
I would like to add, everybody's talking about childcare. Don't forget about Arnold. There used to be six childcare centers in Arnold and there's not one today that I'm aware of. And it's, it's a need. Also, when you restructure or update the On the Right Track, don't forget I'm the nacho cheese guy.
We got you down.
Thank you.
So I just briefly want to say, so I'm Sheri Rush, I'm the current president for the Calaveras Chamber, and in your endeavors and phone calls and all that you do for the, uh, Calaveras Chamber and in your endeavors and phone calls and all that you do for our county and you do run across small businesses that need help, please send them our way because we have so many resources and dollars coming in from different entities, trying to do everything we possibly can to help. So please don't hesitate to send them our way. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, this is an informational item. Thank you both so very much.
Thank you, Sheri.
Good job, Sheri. I'll just be there today night.
Oh, good.
We'll move on to item 12. Madam clerk?
Item 12, Resolution Administrative Office, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing Submital of Sub-Application for $900,000 BRIC Grant from Cal OES for Planning Scoping Project to Mitigate Flooding on Cosgrove Creek.
Mr. Holt?
Good morning, Board. Uh, we come today with brick grant, uh, building resilient cities and communities. Uh, the total grant will be $1.2 million, uh, 190,000 would be matching and, uh, 110 would be general fund. We are looking, this is, uh, federal administrative management is a, a real time kind of change right now, so we've got to look every few minutes on what the changes are. So this grant is in rewrite as of right now with a submission date still of the 28th, so the Friday. Um, we're staying on top of what the changes are. I can give you a quick rundown of that. You know, the Biden administration had a lot of focus on climate change and disadvantaged communities. The Trump administration is changing. So, uh, the change actually does help us in, in that area because we weren't in a true disadvantaged area. Um, and that's originally why we had switched from flood mitigation assistance to brick because we could tie in our major highways and our evacuation center and some of the greater Valley Springs area. So now with the change of that, we can, uh, write it in a way that we can better compete nationally when we get past the, the planning phase. So, uh, Supervisor Tovinelli, myself and CEO Hitchcock had a, uh, town hall down in Valley Springs. It went really well, I felt, um, and we, we told them, you know, this is going to be a five to eight year process. This is step one is to develop, uh, a shovel-ready project to submit and that's when we're going to have to compete nationally. And we are challenged to do that because we're looking at 500 homes maximum and in the grand scheme of things, some small infrastructure. So we're staying ahead of these changes, but I do come to you to ask that we are able to submit, uh, the 1.2 million dollar request to conduct a study, which would have a three year performance. Um, and again, we, we've stated our goal would be to get to work immediately and minimize that down to about 18 months, um, so we can develop that project and then resubmit in a few years.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Supervisor Tovinelli?
No, Eric, I, I want to thank you and this is the first step. It, it is the first step that we've taken. Uh, we've tried other things in the past and, uh, it, things, you know, we keep committing money to clearing out the creek and so far it's done well this year. Uh, we had some heavy rains and I was kind of freaking out about it, but it, it made it through because we were able to clear all the way down, um, entirely. Um, but I think this would, we get this money to go to a project that would permanently, um, relieve that flooding area, um, is what we're looking for. And I think this is a step in the right direction. If we can get a, a shovel-ready job plan in our hands through this money, we'd be able to be eligible for a lot more grants to be able to, to construct what we're looking to do here.
Yes, that is the goal. So thank you for that.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Thank you. I don't, there isn't much to add on to what Gary said. Um, yeah, the, I was down working in it when, uh, we had those rains this year and the, everything being cleared to the point, it has, uh, definitely helped mitigate the issue. Um, but this planning, the project that you're going for will help with those hundred-year or thousand-year rain events, flood events, that, uh, even clearing the vegetation won't, won't take care of. So, um, it's needed. We know it's a stretch on, uh, how to go through it. I mean, the disadvantaged community, I mean, that's a tough one because Arnold's considered a disadvantaged community because the people working there median income is lower because most of those homes are owned by retirees or people that are not li, not living there. Um, but you get down to our area and, and La Quintana and Rancho Calaveras, the median ho, income is much higher because we're all working.
Yeah, absolutely. And, uh, you know, it's not been asked for 110, but we did spend more than that for one year of vegetation clearing. So it, you know, the long-term goal would, would force pass savings. Hopefully we'll get to that.
$900,000 is going to be a part of the planning and that's, that, I mean, that, that's, every bit of that's going to be used. I mean, channeling or anything else, it's going to take us substantially more than that. And, uh, yeah, that's enough said.
One, one of the other outcomes of this would be a positive if it, if it takes place is, um, there's a plan to, um, have a park there for the kids during the off-season. Um, what that'll look like, I don't know yet because we need to get the money to go through the, the project and do the planning for it, but that's a positive because there's, um, the, the only other park down there in that area is the Veterans District Park. This would be a public county-owned park, um, to be maintained and I think it's well needed down there, uh, with the number of kids there. There's two elementary schools down there and Toyon's right there up the hill, but most of the people, most of the kids that go there, a lot of them, not most of them, but a lot of them come from this area. So there's, you know, we're, we need this.
As, as Senator Lamar, I think it'd be huge. And, um, one more caveat to this is, uh, with, I think it was SB1, the money towards, uh, water basin and retention. FEMA said if, if that funding comes available at the state level, we can abandon this without a cost and, and utilize that, that money.
Awesome. Seeing no other questions, do we have any public comment? I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Board.
We'll move on to, uh, item number 13, please.
Item 13, informational item, human resources. One, conduct a public hearing and two, receive a presentation on the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts as outlined in AB 2561.
Great. So I'm opening a public hearing. Using that cowl?
Good morning, Chair Hubbard, members of the Board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. So today, this presentation is being brought to you by AB 2561. We, uh, the new bill went to effect the first of the year and... It's right there. Just because I've seen it a hundred times. So once again, this, um, bill went into effect and the idea was the state does recognize that we have a nationwide issue with, uh, recruiting. There is a tight labor market. There's certain areas that is just almost impossible to recruit for. People are not graduating in those areas. And so the idea between, be, uh, behind AB 2561 was to make sure that we are bringing these things forward to your board and, um, making sure that you're aware. And so just kind of a quick synopsis of the bill. And so the bill does require us to report out in a public hearing what our vacancy rates are and our, uh, recruitment and retention efforts. We are required to bring this before you, um, every fiscal year and before a, a final budget is adopted. And one of the, uh, let me move on to the next one. And then one of the other parts of the bill is that, um, bargaining units are able to give a presentation as well. And right now I do believe at the end of my presentation, SEIU, uh, will be speaking to your board. So our vacancy rates, um, I did put on here what our vacancy rates are per bargaining unit because if we hit 20% or above, um, in any of the bargaining units, we do have to present additional information. And the additional information, um, that would be required is having the total number of job vacancies within the bargaining unit, the total number of applicants for vacant positions within the bargaining unit, the average number of days to complete the hiring process from when a position is posted, and opportunities to improve compensation or other working conditions. And so I did add a slide in to make sure, um, the board is aware of what our vacancy rates are per bargaining unit. And I have added in there unrepresented so that our total, um, employee count is correct. And these are full-time positions. This does not include part-time positions. So it is just permanent full-time positions and we have 634. Um, our total allocated positions right now are 674 and we have 39 part-time. And so, um, as you can see, our, our vacancy rates, um, are well below the 20% and they're actually dropping from what they have been in the past. Now, please keep in mind that this information was as of February 12th and doesn't include any of the recommended, uh, changes that will be brought for, forward to your board. And also it does not include the five new hires that we had yesterday. So we've, uh, we have added, um, positions since these slides were put together. So I also broke out, um, what our vacancy rates are. I broke it out by department and non-general fund and then we will have a slide for general fund. And so while we talk about recruiting challenges, we still have great challenges in our area of behavioral health clinical services and nursing. And one of the things we just are not seeing is many clinicians, uh, come out of school. And so we are working with the department to find ways to, uh, recruit and retain our employees in those areas. Um, so on a positive note, we have been, um, our human services department at this time, the same time last year, had 13 vacancies. We currently have five and I believe that two of our new hires yesterday was in human services. So we are seeing improvement in our areas. And so for our general fund departments, we are seeing, um, huge improvements in those areas, especially in, um, in our sheriff's department. So at this time last year, we had 10 vacant deputy positions. Right now we have five and I believe we have two of the five, um, starting in the beginning stages of background. So we are doing, um, fantastic in those areas and even our correctional officers at this time last year, we were down 12 positions and currently we have five vacancies and we do have four candidates in background and I believe we have one that has completed, one of those four that have completed. So we're seeing improvements. You know, this time last year, we had a 16% vacancy rate, um, in our general fund department. And as you can see on this slide, we have just over a 12% vacancy rate. So I do want to thank your board for the efforts in the class and comp study and the increases that we gave employees. I think that it has made a large, uh, we are seeing the, uh, the efforts that have been made, the positive side of the efforts.
County Council still has two open positions?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
But we have been in discussions. We have ideas and we, we, we are in discussions. Attorneys are, and I can say attorneys are another area where they're golden unicorns. Um, there's not as many coming out of school, there's not as many going into government.
Maybe not golden.
Sterling silver, how's that? So, but we have, we are seeing, um, my daughter-in-law is an attorney and the firm that she works for is having a very difficult time, even in the private sector, uh, recruiting attorneys. In fact, she was recruited from her law school in, um, Illinois and started before ever passing the bar. So there's, there is, um, definitely a deficit across our nation with attorneys, clinicians, nurses, um, everybody. I read a, uh, an article lately that stated that 34% of our younger generation wants to be influencers. And so they're not going into any type of, uh, specific career field. They, they want to influence. So I need to start paying an influencer to, to, uh, recruit for us.
College degree.
So, oops, sorry, too fast. So to talk about our efforts and I think a lot of time our efforts are behind scenes and nobody really realizes what we are doing to, to recruit and, um, retain our employees. And so one of the things that we have, um, looked at is our timeframe to recruit and for a lot of different reasons, it may take anywhere from 60 to 90 days before we are making an offer to a candidate. And by then they have most likely accepted an offer elsewhere. And this is, these numbers are not unusual for government, especially local government, but it doesn't mean we can't improve them. And so we are looking at ways to enhance our applicant tracking system. We are absolutely dissecting every step of the recruitment process so we can figure out where we're losing those efficiencies. And sometimes also, you know, the departments we're working with, they may have things that going, going on that makes it very difficult to, to, uh, get the interviews completed sometimes. You know, we're talking about panel interviews, getting your panel together. So HR is going to do a lot more work with the departments on the front side and getting these done ahead of time, making sure that departments have their panels, they know the date that they want to interview. We can put all of this information in the recruitment and so then it also helps the candidate when they know, okay, here's, here's when we're doing the final, uh, review of applications, here's when we're going to interview. And I think that will also, um, help in, especially when they see things moving along. Our applicant tracking systems let the candidate know when their application's being moved forward. They can self-schedule. If somebody doesn't self-schedule, we call and make sure we give our candidates every opportunity to interview. So we will be working a lot, uh, a lot more with the departments to streamline this process and I am, um, hoping to target when I'm sitting in front of you the next fiscal year, that we've got it down to about 45 days. And then the year after that, even better. So those are our goals in the HR department. Another goal is attracting qualified candidates. A lot of times we are missing out on good candidates that have a lot of experience because we are requiring a degree. And so in areas where it's possible, because we can't do this for our, you know, deputy county councils, but where it's, where we are able to do it, we are updating job descriptions to state that a combination of education and experience may be qualifying. And so then that way we are, um, attracting and we really want to be able to address the skills-based efforts and, um... And, and then ideally, we will be able to get a workforce that addresses our talent shortages, and it will diversify our workforce and improve our hiring outcomes. And so those are the areas that we are also focusing on. Another issue that we have come across, and it affects both our recruitment and our retention, is our healthcare benefits. Healthcare is a growing cost. It is growing faster than a lot can keep on top of. We are part of a insurance pool, which is Prism, who does a great job of shopping our healthcare providers. Where we run into stumbling blocks is being rural. We do have a deficit of physicians in the area, and then also, we are not close enough to Kaiser, to take advantage of their HMO program. So, we have challenged Alliant, who is our broker through Prism, to come back with planned designs that will help take advantage of all the benefits out there without increasing the cost a lot. But we want to be able to, to provide more for our employees, but we also have to keep in mind, we can, you know, only do as much as we can afford. So, right now, we are waiting to get information back from them. We've also filed an appeal with Kaiser for them to, to consider us even though we are outside of their requirements. So, we're working on that. We're hoping to have, they have not come back and just said no. They, the letter was sent a few months ago, and so we are still waiting to hear back on that. So, we're, we're trying to figure out our benefits every way possible. We also have a benefits committee, and where we have members from every bargaining unit who meets with our brokers from Alliant to, to come up with ideas. And so ideas like me looking at HSAs or things like that. So, we do look forward to bringing information back to your board on changes to our benefit plans. And so, moving, continuing with retention, we are, we have been, and as part of HR's strategic plan, has been leadership training. We are continuing, we started an HR 101 training for supervisors and managers. Nick is performing that training monthly for our new managers and supervisors, or department heads who would like to take the training, and then also anyone who would like to retake the training. So we are giving it on a very regular basis to make sure that everybody goes through it. HR 101 trains our managers on their responsibilities as a manager and supervisors in those areas that, that are not just HR's responsibility. So, performance reviews, making sure they understand the MOUs that their employees fall under in those areas, so. And then also, there are outside trainings that we make sure our management staff has opportunities. We belong to a Libra Cassidy Consortium, who get, has management trainings, both web-based and in-person. In fact, we have one coming up in March that is a full-day training on being a frontline supervisor that we are sending six of our managers to. And then also, departments are taking advantage of training that's available to them. I know that our HHSA agency does a lot of training with UC Davis, and also brings in trainers in a lot of different areas. And so we are also trying to make sure we have training available to other departments. And so, when we talk about our leadership training, we are also including training on creating a positive workplace culture. And so as the, the world changes, and we've gone through so many changes just in the time that I've been here, which is just under 10 years, there has always been something. We, we went through a lot of changes in our county, Buick Fire, then we've had, you know, just the different, COVID was a very difficult time for us to get through, and then now we have a lot of different changes on the, the political front. And so we want to make sure that we're keeping a positive workplace culture in all of our departments. And so it's very important that we're getting trainings to our manager on how to maintain, you know, a good workplace culture in their departments, because, you know, we've worked hard to, we invest in our employees. They are our most important assets, and so we want to make sure that we are holding on to them. So that's going to be a big focus in this, this year. And so I'm hoping to have some very positive feedback next year for your board. And so I would love to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from board? Supervisor Staubner? I saw you leaning to that button.
I know, but I'm just gonna take Ms. Handel's advice. But, I'm serious. You know I can't do it. Telework, updating that we ask for it to come back to the board on how successful it's been. In some areas, I think it works, in other areas, I definitely know it doesn't. So, I think, I don't necessarily pushing to get rid of it so much as refine it so that, but it's, it's, it's a tough situation because just one size doesn't fit all.
Correct. And so we have put together a work group. The work group has met three, four times? Three times. And so they are, they will be making recommendations to your board. We are not looking to make the telework policy go away, but we do think, as you put it, Supervisor Staubner, it does need to be refined, because there's not a one-size-fits-all for telework. It just all depends, I mean, with my office, as small as my office, telework doesn't work there, but other areas, it works, you know, in IT, it may be a different story. So, I think that, you know, they are on the right track. They have been working hard, and so we will be bringing information back to your board. And we did give an update six months after.
I know, but that was a blanket update, and it was all peaches and cream when you gave it.
That's what was reported back to me, so no.
And you know what? I hear you, and I'm not, I'm not, it's not argument. It does need to be refined.
Yes.
And I would, I would like to see it happen sooner than later, but, you know, we have plenty of stuff on our plate, so.
I do think they are coming to a point, and Nick, if you want to speak to this, the work group is coming to a point where they're getting ready to make recommendations, is that correct?
Yes, we have met a few times over this, and we've come up with a good plan. We're currently working on a draft of the revisions that I'm gonna send back out to the group, and then we'll come back up with recommendations from there.
Thank you, Nick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, is there any public comment regarding this?
And I do believe SEIU wants to speak.
Oh, yes, Andrea.
As well. Also, I do want to make sure you know that our, we, our efforts have been great in the areas of recruitment of the calendar year of 2024. We had 157 recruitments with 3,000 applications, so.
A lot of applications.
Yes.
The application thing's a little bit off the Richter with everything. I mean, we get people putting in from India that don't even show up for.
Yes, there is, so, there is a lot of work in going through the applications to make sure we have qualified candidates, but we, we are doing everything we can for the outreach.
Thank you.
Andrea.
Good morning. My name's Andrea Colavita Pinkham from SEIU 1021. Forgot to introduce my last time, myself last time, I just assume everybody knows who I am. While I don't want to discount the importance of pay, I think the class and comp study did a really good job at beginning to raise that level, and then we have contract negotiations next year where we can address the rest of that. I really want to talk about the, kind of the last three bullets, the timeframe, the leadership, and then the positive workplace environment. The timeframe is a big deal. The timeframe is a really big deal, especially in the positions that require background checks. And there are positions in my bargaining unit that do require that. There has been some things we've done in some other jurisdictions that have helped remedy that, so if anybody wants to hear about those later on, I'd be happy to talk about that. The other two bullets I really want to talk about is leadership training and then the positive workplace environments. So, it's great you get people in the door, right? You get them here, what do you need to do to keep them here? Lately, the biggest people, reason I've heard for people reasoning, leaving is how they're treated at work, okay? And while I think it's wonderful that you're teaching people, you know, the basics of how to follow the rules, the MOU, you can't teach people basic human compassion and how to treat people with respect. And that's, I'm finding is not happening in certain areas. When people leave disgruntled, they're the kind of people that wind up calling the newspaper and tipping them off about current things that are happening in departments. That's just what happening, what's happening. When you have an employee that loses two immediate family members and has another one in the hospital, and their work product starts to slip, instead of taking things away from them, maybe you should refer them to EAP and ask if they're okay. You don't have to get personal with them, but just show some human compassion, instead of reprimanding them for not getting their work done. Things like that, that's why people leave, because they're not treated like humans. And I can't underscore that enough. When people get picked on by the cliques, the mean girls, or the mean men, let's not discriminate here, that's why people leave. And let's work on that. Let's work on that positive workplace environment. Let's work on people getting their leaves when they meet them. Let's work on those things, and I think the people you get in the door will wind up staying, and that's what we want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? I will close the public hearing. No, thank you. Close the public hearing, and this is informational, correct? Yes. So thank you very much, Judy.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to item 14.
Item 14, ordinance, one, conduct a public hearing. Two, conduct a Zeta and Rode negative declaration. Three, adopt and coordinate zoning of APN 036.
Sorry, thank you. Zoning of APN 036, 005, 009, A18183, Garbaldi Street in Mountain Ranch, from single-family residential R1 to local commercial C1 for the Sender's Market, and four, authorize summary publication and a brief property description and map of the reclassified property.
Thank you. Brett.
Good morning, my name is Catherine Stephanie, I'm a planner too with the planning department, and, Chair. I apologize if I missed it, but we do need to open another public hearing.
This one actually makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. Opening a public hearing, thank you very much, yes. I did it in orange, so I would remember.
If they asked.
Yeah, I guess.
Again, good morning, my name is Catherine, and I am presenting planning project number 2023-028, a zoning amendment for Sender's Market. The application proposes to amend the zoning of assessor parcel number 036-005-009, shown in red on the screen, from single-family residential R1 to local commercial C1 to accommodate an expansion to Sender's Market located on the adjacent parcel, APN 036-002-027. The application is being processed under the county zoning code adopted on August 25th, or, excuse me, August 15th of 2024. The subject parcel is currently zoned R1 and developed with a barn. The proposed C1 zone is meant to provide areas for small-scale businesses that meet the needs of local community areas and our near-residential neighborhoods. The project site is in the Mountain Ranch Community Plan area, and the proposed C1 zone is compatible with the parcel's historic center designation. Rezoning the subject parcel, which is circled in red on the screen, to C1 would be consistent with the surrounding parcels in the downtown Mountain Ranch area, which includes single-family residences mixed among businesses such as the post office, Sender's Market, and a gas station. No comments or concerns were received from the routing of the application or the notices of public hearing. And the applicant is requesting the zoning amendment to allow an expansion to Sender's Market, again located on the adjacent parcel. The amendment would reduce the setback to zero and facilitate a lot line adjustment allowing for the expansion. The subject parcel is developed with a barn from the early 1900s that has been used for storage for many years. The barn can't be used commercially due to building code requirements and the need for a well-inseptic system, but no alterations are proposed to the barn. The project is consistent with the general plan, including policies encouraging a strong economic base through the retention of business and supporting growth in existing communities. Pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, a negative declaration was done, finding less than significant environmental impacts, and no comments were received to the public routing. At the January 23rd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, no public comments were received, and the commission recommended approval of the project. In conclusion, staff finds the proposed rezone to C1 consistent with the general plan and compatible with surrounding land uses and zoning. The project as proposed will not have a significant effect on the environment, and the proposed zone is consistent with current uses on the project site. Again, the planning commission recommended the adoption of the negative declaration and approval of the zoning amendment. This concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any forward comments? Supervisor Handel.
So, Sender's Market is the heart of Mountain Ranch. It is, it ties us all together, and I can't say enough about the Sender's family and Allen, and what they have done for Mountain Ranch and continue to do, and I appreciate all of their time and efforts and positive input into the community. I think this is a great thing, the expansion and, you know, kind of the protection of that historic barn in the process. Thank you.
Supervisor Toffenauer?
Yeah, I wanted to say the same thing, more or less, that they're not the whole heart of Valley Springs downtown, they're, they're a major valve of it, of the heart from one side. But Allen took over the hardware store there when it was really going down, and he's, it's just, it's, it's a great job, thank you.
I am a little jealous of the candy store in Valley Springs.
Yes, we do have the candy store in there now.
That would entail rezoning much more.
Supervisor Staubner, anything else? Nope. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Okay, I will close the public hearing then, and I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I will make a motion to move this ordinance.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, board.
And now we'll move on to our last item for today, which is item number 15. Madam Clerk?
Item 15, action item, administrative office. One, receive the fiscal year 2425 mid-year budget presentation. Two, approve the mid-year budget adjustments included in attachments A and B. Three, approve the mid-year capital request included in, as attachment C. And four, approve the mid-year personal request outlined in attachment D, requires a four-fifth vote of the board. vote of the board.
Marcus.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. If I could just have a minute while we pull it up on the computer here.
Could I, could I ask County Council, do we then vote on these individually or all at, all at once?
It's up to you, Chair.
All at once, then.
I think, I think typically, for mid-year, yeah, it would be one, one vote.
One motion for it all?
Typically, yes. But if you wanted.
Changes before that, then.
Well, right, certainly if the board had modifications to what was presented, you know, that can be part of the motion.
You could do a poll about the TOC portion of it.
I think there could be some items in here that need, could be pulled off.
It's up to the board, I don't.
If you vote yes for all of it, then you, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll learn what your thing.
Separating.
Either way, it's fine.
Ready? Let's go.
All right. Good morning. All right. So today's meeting, I have it separated into two portions. So the first portion is the mid-year report to go over the numbers related to mid-year and the adjustments related to mid-year. And this year, I am putting a little more emphasis on direction for next year's process, so fiscal year 2526. And the reason for that is it will be much more difficult in this coming year to bring it to the same point that we were at this year. And so I want to go into a little more depth on that before getting direction from the board on how we shall proceed. So with that, we'll jump into the mid-year portion. So going back to when we adopted the budget at the end of September, our operating funds were $267 million. General fund was at 82.4 million, and revenues were at just under 72 million. We had a contingency of 1.8, and we had a general fund reserve at five point, just under 5.6 million, which is at the policy minimum. And this is where our structural deficit was at the end of September. Again, the 82 million dollars in expenditures, when you back out the contingencies and the transfers, we ended up with a net total of just over 74 million dollars. When you look at that compared to our revenue of just under 72 million, we had a structural deficit of 2.272 million dollars. And this is how we are currently looking. Right now, our, on the revenue side of things, our, our revenue is coming in relatively right where we projected it. Just turning to my notes real quick. A couple of areas I want to point out, the use of money is at 106%. That is primarily interest. We had budgeted interest to drop as we thought during the budget process that interest rates would go down. They have not, and that's why we are seeing this increase in interest compared to what we have budgeted. And then you also, if you look at the intergovernmental revenue for federal, we have only received 10% to date. Right now, we have submitted claims, but we have a lot of federal dollars out there that we haven't been paid for yet. And so we do anticipate the money to come in, we just have not received it to date.
Well, probably depending if there's anybody that still sees money coming in.
We, we have been pushing some claims we've had out there for several months that we are waiting for. All right. Next slide. And then the next slide is just a comparison to last year, where we are at in terms of revenue. Again, that interest line, the use of money property, you see is above where we were last year. Everything else is relatively falling in place to where we were last year, with the exception of the federal dollars and that interest. Overall, we've seen a 1% increase at this time compared to last time on our revenue, and this time being December 31st. So here is a, a graph of our revenues, and this, the red line is 50% of what we budgeted. And as you can see, property tax is trending slightly higher, which is typical at this time. And then everything else is right around that red line with Prop 172 seeing, coming in a little lower than what we budgeted. Now, on the expenditure side of things, salary and benefits is at 48%. And then we see our capital assets are a little, are, they're a little more than half, they're at 63% of what was budgeted. That is typical. Typically, when capital assets are added to the budget, we want to get those in. A lot of them have awaiting periods, so we typically order at the beginning half of the year, so that is normal. Our total expenditures are at 44% of what was budgeted. When we look at last year, our, where we fall compared to where we were in 2023, there's two big areas that, that are different, salaries and benefits. At this point, we are up 9.3% compared to December 31st, 2023. The reason for that is actually what Judy spoke about a few items ago, is our vacancy rate. We have seen our vacancy rate drop. We are filling positions, and therefore we are seeing a higher amount of salaries and benefits in that line. And then the operating transfers out is at 96.6% increase over last year. That is primarily due to, in this year's budget, we put a million dollars towards our 27th payroll, that I believe is hitting in 2027, 28, as we are getting ready for that. And so we did process that transfer with, which shot that line up. And so overall, with everything taken into account, we are seeing 7.3% over what we expended last year at this time. So quick summary of the numbers, our mid-year revenues are on target. We're at 46.4% of the budget. Again, we are missing quite a bit of federal funding in that number. Our local sales tax, our Prop 172, are slightly underperforming, and excise tax is coming in flat. Expenditures are slightly less than appropriate at 44% of budget, but we do have some that are higher compared to 2425, such as the personnel, salaries and benefits costing. And expenditures are slightly outpacing revenues. We saw that in capital assets and the transfers being higher. And again, the vacancy rate has dropped, creating our increase year over year in the salaries and benefits line. So now getting into the requests. So fixed assets, we do not have any fixed asset requests in this year's budget for mid-year. So no additional fixed asset request. And on the general fund side, we are requesting a CIP project at the airport. And I am saying general fund, airport is an enterprise fund, but this, we are looking to repair the exterior of the administration building. And unfortunately, the airport doesn't have the fund balance to cover the repair. If we were to pay it out of the airport, airport's budget, they would essentially wipe out their entire fund balance, and next year they would be looking for a general fund draw. So what we are requesting is a general fund draw to repair the siding on the airport. And what's going on over there is we had our facilities managers walk out, they put their hand on the side, and their hand went right through the wall. So it is deteriorating and it needs to be replaced. So we are looking to do that.
Your hands off the wall.
So that is the one and only CIP that I do have in the budget for the general fund. I do have some for Public Works as well. Public Works, and here's the Public Works for the CIP requests. These are a few that were budgeted last year. Maybe they were supposed to be finished but didn't quite finish, so we had to shift appropriations to this year. So that is Mong Ranch Road, O'Burns Ferry Guardrails. So again, the appropriations were in last year's, and we are shifting some because the project was completed in this year. And then we have the Clean California, Murphy's Park Lighting, matching the expenditure, so we reduced that CIP amount, as well as added in some for the Pen Gulch Art Path, which is over there by the elementary school in Pennsylvania.
Anything from District 5 when it comes to Baldwin or anything? And O'Burns, you carrying the money over when?
That one.
Okay, different O'Burns. Okay, nevermind. This is, this is, this is separate from SB 1 money. Okay. My apologies. I'm wrong.
Any other CIP questions?
Supervisor Toffenow.
No, I'll be quiet for right now. I mean, other than the fact that it continues to go outside of District 1 or District 5 on the CIPs that come forward here, year after year. And it just doesn't seem to be changing any here. So I'll be quiet for a moment when we get into supervisor talking.
We need four votes for this, Carrie, so I'll get out of your way.
On that note, I do have a request for District 2 I'd like to pull the board on. Mountain Ranch Park, which while Senders is the heart, the park is the soul. It has a failing septic system. It has been failing. The community club has been paying for a porta potty they no longer can. There's no hand washing that takes place. There is softball, Little League, community events that take place in the park that are looking at not happening in light of this problem. So I would like to see about the possibility of expediting this project, that we already have the engineering for, we already have the permitting for, that would keep this park, that is a county park, operational. And Marcus, maybe you can give a little bit of the background on that.
Sure. So this is the park the county owns that is on, I believe it's Whiskey Slide Road in Mountain Ranch. Right now, we were informed of the septic tank failing. We did send, I don't know what they're called, a septic engineer out there, a professional out there to look at it. They looked at it, they were able to design some plans for us. We do, we have submitted those plans, and they have been permitting. We were intending on getting a grant to pay for the project, and so we were hoping to hear from them that that would be approved so we can move forward with the project. At this point, with everything that's happened in LA and the fires, it doesn't look like that grant will be, it doesn't look like we'll be getting that grant. So we just found that out recently, and that's why we did not request it at mid-year. It was, we were going to bring it back at recommended, but if the board would like me to add it in at mid-year, we can definitely do that. We are anticipating the cost. The engineer's estimate was at $30,000. I would request a little bit above that in case there's any other expenditures, so about $35,000.
Would the board like to address this now? Or should we wait until the end?
Well, we moved that one.
Right.
Well, you, you're going to bring it back in June. We're recommended, but.
Right, we can talk about it now or, or June.
I just want to say, San Andreas Park up here, a couple of years ago, had the same type of issue and water problem, water tanks. We replaced the water tanks, if you remember. And I gave $12,000 in my discretionary funds to pay for that. So it might be something you want to consider.
Did you just say you were going to spend all those discretionary funds?
Yes. I gave 12,000.
I'm saying for her district, right.
Well, we do have money in Pucksmack, too. I mean, but that can be a discussion for the budget, I mean, case.
I, I see so much money going to Row Row, Flat School, and I, I mean, I understand the need. I'm personally of the opinion, waiting for recommended.
So I do have a concern about waiting for recommended because it virtually renders this park unusable, and there are a number of youth programs that happen at the park that are unlikely to happen this summer if we were not to move forward prior to recommended. Of course, it is a board decision, but just bear that in mind, that this will probably affect programming at that particular park if they don't have restrooms or anywhere to wash their hands for their Little League events.
Can we, after you go through this, can we revisit it and look at it with, what it looks like from Pucksmack, or Gary's recommendation on that? I mean, if it's going to, food's coming around the corner, and I, I guess I was thinking, recommended we just adopt whatever that cost is that you guys worked on it going forward. But I'm not against having the conversation, I just want to get through everything else because I know that that tally, that dollar sign is going to start adding up to really bad.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm happy to bring it back, talk about it, and maybe find a way to get it done. I don't want to put the public in a position where we have an issue health-wise because of it, certainly, so.
And while, what do we, did we look into Prop 68, or did we use all of that already on Will with us?
So it's my understanding the Prop 68 funding that we had has been exhausted. Is that correct, Marcus?
That is correct.
So we'll be applying for another round of that, and this would be an ideal project for that. But again, if we're waiting for those types of funding sources or until June to start the project, it's highly likely that the park wouldn't be usable for the summer.
Marcus, would you like to continue?
Yes. And then we have a position changes. So many of the position changes that I am going to present today, outside of Public Works, were related to the class and comp. So you're going to see several deletions, and then you're going to see a few reclassifications in here. So reclassifications, this one is not related to the class and comp. This is a reclassification from a library assistant to an administrative assistant. The reason for this is when our previous librarian was here, she took on a lot of the administrative duties. And prior to leaving, she passed those duties on to a library, a library assistant, the one that is listed here. And so now they are doing duties outside of that position, so we are trying to reclassify them into a proper position that is able to do those duties that they're doing.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the, the dollars that you have here, you say total first year full cost.
Yes.
Is that through June 31st?
That is for the full first year, so of next year.
So this time next year?
It, it is.
So it'd be half of that for the rest of this year, and then going into the next budget, half of these in the next budget?
Correct. So 7,500 would be for the year 2526, the full year.
All right.
And then a portion for the remainder of this year. So that is the cost for that change. And that, and then the, and then the building one was related to class and comp, and this was taking the administrative assistant and moving it, reclassing it down to the account technician, and this was based off also the duties that they are performing. And that is, so the account technician would, would create a savings for the department. There is a, a request for an addition, and this comes from Human Resources and Admin. With moving the Human Resources building to this area, we now are staffing a lobby. And so before, when HR was in the other building, it was all together. And so we have, at this point, been using an extra hire. And so rather than an extra hire, we were looking to, to add a Human Resources Office Assistant to help man that front lobby area. And then additionally, we were looking to transfer a position from Public Works to Admin. This is the Safety and Training Specialist. We've had a few positions, a few people in that position, but as it became vacant, we're reviewing the position and thought it would make more sense being out of Public Works and moving it over to the Admin Unit. And then the deletions, we have in the Building Department, the Fire Marshal position, a Supervising Admin Assistant, and a Building Inspector. And in the Planning Department, we have an Administrative Assistant looking to be deleted. And again, we also have an Admin Services Officer in Environmental Health, a Technical Training Specialist in Behavior Health, and an Integrated Waste Management Position, which is the Engineering Tech.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are any of those positions that you just mentioned for deletions, are any of those filled right now, or are these non-filled positions?
So we, there is one filled. So all of the deletions do not affect any, all the deleted positions are vacant at this moment. We do have a reclassification in the Building Department. This person is getting ready to retire, that's filling it. So they would maintain the current title. Once they retire, the position will drop down. And then we have the Public Works Department. We have several in the Public Works Department. I do want to point out, since this was published, there has been a change. That first one listed on there, we will be pulling. And when Judy brings the position control list, that first one will not be on there. That is an Admin Assistant to an Account Tech. But the rest will be coming back next week with the position control list if the board approves these. The Administrative Assistant to the Senior Accounting Tech, another reclass, an Admin Services Officer to an Accounting Tech, and an Admin Services Officer to an Accounting Tech. And then we have five Public Works Analysts, one moving to a Development Service Specialist, one moving, or three moving to a Public Works Project Analyst, and then one moving to a Senior Public Works Inspector. And those are the reclassifications. And then for Public Works, there is also a request for four deletions. And that is an administrative, two administrative assistants, a Public Works Project Administrator, and the Public Works Inspector.
Are those filled?
These positions.
The deletions are all filled, correct?
There are several positions that are filled. I believe all of the reclasses are filled, the deletions. I know that one of them is filled, so.
So the Inspector position is vacant. So the Public Works Inspector, the other three positions, do you have employees in them that will be able to exercise bumping rights? Or we also are working with the employees to find a position that they would be successful in, and then Y-rating them so they are not losing pay?
Well, are these SEIU positions, these three?
So three of them are SEIU, the Inspector, and the two Administrative Assistants, and then one is Management.
Okay. So, so just in the previous item that was presented to us, in vacancies, you said, there's 48 vacancies in SEIU. So those, these people that are on this list, out of those 48, are we looking to see if they fit in to any of those 48 positions that are open right now?
Yes, and we have been successful.
And you have been successful?
Yes.
And that is the personnel request.
Do we have agreement with meet and confers on all these positions right now that are listed?
We have met and conferred. I will pass it over to Judy from the agreement side.
So we have had two meet and confers with the Management Unit. We are, we do have an agreement with the Management Unit. And we have had three meet and confers with SEIU. We have been working with them. And we are hopeful that we will be on the same page when we bring this back on March 11.
So who can be coming back for finalization? So this, we aren't voting on this today, then?
So the way that we, this is how we always do mid-year, the presentation comes and approval of these changes. And then the actual changes to the position control list typically come back at the subsequent meeting.
Okay, gotcha. I just know that. I still not okay with it. Still not okay with it. Reclassification, then.
All right. So outside of those, we do have some notable adjustments. And on here, on the next three slides, I've listed basically any adjustment that was 10,000 or more that did not have an offsetting revenue. I wanted the board to be aware of, and so that is what is on the next three slides. So the total adjustments totaled 199,000, just under $200,000. So everything that we've done at mid-year, that was the total that we have to account for. So an increase of 199,000. So what did we do in mid-year? What is in here? We finalized all the class and comp final adjustments. We went through every budget. Based on the timing, it was approved. We didn't have enough time to get it in at adopted budget, so we went through here at mid-year and made sure everything was in there. We also went through unfunded liability. The way we were dispersing unfunded liability, we budgeted it as a percentage, but it was based on actual salaries in each department. And so while we may have had enough appropriations in one budget, we may not have had another one based on what actuals are. So we had to go through each budget and make sure every budget had enough appropriation. So we took some away here, added some here to get those all corrected. Outside of that, we had a few other department-specific adjustments. In OES, we have a grant, the McKay's Fuel Break in OES. We were anticipating when we budgeted to receive the retention in this year. The project is not finished, so we will not be receiving the retention in these, this year. And so we need to push that out till next year, and that's about $150,000. In Human Resources, as I mentioned earlier, we have been paying for an extra hire, and so we were bumping up the extra hire costs to account for that. And then in IT, we have been seeing software and hardware costs increase across the board in large amounts. And so they are requesting an additional 44,000 for software and an additional 10,000 for hardware. Elections, we do have a special election in May, and so they are requesting an increase to postage and an increase to paper products. And then facilities, we did have two projects that's in this $55,000 line item. One is, we are mapping the government center to create evacuation routes, and that is offset, that's 21,000, that is offset with revenue. The other 20, there was a contract, 24, that was for, we, we had a safety issue and we had to do a contract to go and remove a county-owned property, tear it down. And so that was taken care of. So we're increasing facilities budget. And then we have library, increase again, software subscriptions. And then we had a finding that we had to cover in, for $9,000 in the road fund. And then we had utilities, and this is primarily the water. We did budget enough on the PGN East side and the other utilities, but we are falling short when it came to water. And so we have increased that budget here at mid-year by 25,000. And then Animal Services has seen an increase in extra hire cost. They're projecting to need 35,000 more to make it through the end of the year, as well as 15 more in the professional services, which is typically vet services. So those are the three slides on those for the departments. And before I get into the direction for next year, did, Chair, would you like me to continue with the presentation and talk about the direction, or would you like to meet a pause there and we can talk about what was presented?
I think we should pause here. I'd like to ask the rest of the board members what they feel, but if we could pause here and address what we've heard so far, I think that's a good idea. You all right with that? Chair, I mean, Supervisor, stop her. You're right with that? Okay.
I, I think you explained very well what's going on here, and you broke down the 199,000. Pretty good. Again, the only comment I have is the CIP for Public Works. And in continuing going to other districts without going back at the history, even this year, where it was supposed to be all District One, they paved outside of District One into District Two. So the money that was supposed to be used in District One, a major portion of it was used in District Two. I think that needs to be refocused and looked at, what's going on, not just District Two. I'm not picking on District Two. But, but we need to relook at these CIPs, in my opinion, going forward to, to bring it back into where we're, we have five districts here, and they're all five districts are getting looked at and, and not just focused on certain areas in, in other districts. It's been a long time, other than we did have the Valley Screen School project going on, but that was through COG, the funding went through COG. Basically, it wasn't just a CIP like we're looking at here. So I think that's my opinion on what I'm looking at here as we're moving forward.
And that's all rollover from last year, is that completed?
A few of them are rollover from last year. I can go back to the slide.
Yeah, the, the Monkey Ranch Road is a rollover from last year, which.
That was added. That wasn't even on the CIP list. That one road, that was added later, and I brought that up during that meeting that we had. All of a sudden, it appeared, and it was on there, and now we're spending money on it. So it wasn't even part of it.
How long ago was that?
Last year, about September, October. Yeah, disappeared. And I made a comment then, what about District One? So, yeah, that road was not originally part of this.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah?
No, you couldn't, they.
You remember it, Martin?
Well, no, a year and a half ago, I was here.
We put the CIP projects together 2020.
In 2020?
Right.
Five years ago.
Right.
But, I mean.
That road was never on.
Gotcha.
Sorry, but.
Well-known, and to be perfectly honest with you, I think the charm of that project is actually, it looks like something, it was a charming little one-lane bridge, and then that looks like something on an LA overpass. And it's, in my personal opinion, it's a, it's a bit over the top. And I don't know, you know, who to speak to, and that was sort of, the ball was already rolling on that design and what have you, so.
Well, that's one of my district, because it was my district project.
Thank you.
And so we can talk about that offline with Mike.
Okay.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of headache with that project. It was not.
And it was a tremendous amount of money, and there were only four houses on the other side of it.
Just on the other side, you get four houses.
And I think that also with the redistricting summit, like, that particular project was originally in my district.
Right.
And there is a lot of things that awaited that, and some negotiations that had to go on to get that, where it is even in this moment in time. And so I think like when we were, it's kind of, it's, I think some stuff, some of us are getting punched in the face for stuff that happened, and it's the wrong direction. So maybe that should be at me, not with Martin.
Well, no, and the other thing, too, is the Murphy's lighting. And I, and I meet with Micah this week about this, but that has just been the one, I don't want to say, screw-up after another. And I'm still waiting, a year, in April, it will be a year that one of those lights was knocked down, the new lights was knocked down, has never been replaced, and some of the new lights aren't even functional at this point, so. I mean, if we want to get down to the nitty-gritty.
And I just didn't.
You want to get down to the nitty-gritty with me? Let's talk about projects. How many got done up in your district?
Yeah.
That weren't on the list? How many did get done that were on the list that were in my, my district or his district?
I would love to talk about this position control list and the reclassifications. I mean, can someone explain to me what a Development Services Specialist is?
So this position, we do have an employee that is currently classified as an Public Works Analyst, but the job duties that are being performed are not exactly that of an analyst. And so we did look at other counties, we did look at that particular position, and it fit with the actual duties that the person is performing.
What are those duties?
And so in, there, there are certain duties in processing information for the surveyor. There is also, they are a lead for the permit tax, and they provide technical direction for the permit tax. But they're heavily involved in also, in looking at the conditioning of jobs that, for developments. And so it is a, a position that is a little unique, but in a small rural county like we are, sometimes that is necessary for a position and to truly capture all the duties the person is responsible for. Do you want to add anything to that?
So analysts, you've got Public Works Analyst, too, to Public Works Project Analyst, too. So it's basically the same thing, just a different name.
So really, it's a change in title and some of the job duties. And we felt that the analyst position was very broad, and so we were trying to make sure that the job duties were truly what the staff is responsible for.
I think about, the reclassifications, thinking about, or maybe pulling out, letting it rest for a second, see if it's possible, but that's just my opinion.
Chair, have a good evening. So on the classifications, as was stated earlier, those will be coming back to the board at the next meeting for actual approval. We could have a more in-depth discussion about those changes at that time. We are hoping to have a resolution with SEIU as well. At that time, we're pretty close right now. I believe we have one outstanding issue. I don't know if Andrea wants to make any comments on that or not, but we have one outstanding issue on the reclasses.
Andrea, would you like to speak to that?
Sure.
I have one, while she's coming up, I got one.
Do you want to talk first?
You can come on up. I'm just gonna ask them a real quick question while you're on the way up here. The reclassifications, is this a class comp? Were those positions recognized as different in the class comp that we did? Is that why these are being done this way? Should we add these positions? We didn't have them before?
Um, we did not add these positions. These were actual employees who are employed by the county. They were employed by the county prior to class and comp. We had some concerns expressed by employees and also then by our managers. And so we undertook an actual evaluation of what the employees are doing and just are looking at, making sure that we have people in the classifications that they're actually working in, because these classifications actually didn't fit the ones that we're moving folks from, so.
Okay.
And I think, I think SEIU's actually been involved.
I would ask, well, what, you know, oh, I turned it off. I was trying to turn it on. What, what, so it's on a different, it's on a different pay scale, some of them?
Some of them are.
Yeah. And some will have to be Y-rated?
Yes.
And then others could go the opposite way?
That happens in any evaluation of reclassification. They could have all moved up, or they could have all moved down, or they could move, it just depends when you're looking at the actual jobs that folks are doing and where they actually fit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't want to.
Sorry, sorry, Andrea.
No, don't, don't apologize to me. This is good discussion. And so just to address some of the things that were brought up here, we have been successful in placing one of, one of the people, and she is very happy with the placement. We did want to address this during the class and comp. I think some of the folks that were involved did want to address this. And that's why, not to dredge up old things, but that's why we were, we were suspect at the timing of this.
not to dredge up old things, but that's why we were suspect at the timing of this reorganization. But to move in a more positive note now, now that we've established that this is a meet and confer, not a meet and notify, and to go off the direction of Ms. Hitchcock, that a good compromise leaves both parties unhappy in the end, or a little bit unhappy in the end, not completely unhappy. We've been working really hard on our end to come to an agreement. And it was yesterday afternoon, but we sent over a counterproposal that shows significant movement on our part. And we're hoping that administration, the department and HR recognize that, and that we're able to come to an agreement. Okay? So that's where we are. I believe there is one significant, I don't know, one outstanding issue, Ms. Hitchcock is correct in that, and with that one issue, hopefully we can come to an agreement. But it does show significant movement on our part, and it's our belief that it's kind of time for the county to kind of meet us in the middle now, because we believe we've done our part.
So my issue with this is if there's one outstanding issue, and we give the go-ahead to bring it back, it's going to be pretty much in print when it comes back.
I'm going to be honest with you, and I've been here for many years, I don't completely understand, and I know everybody says, is this how you guys do it? But I don't understand how it works with the list here and then come back in two weeks with the position control. I know that this is how you guys do it, but I don't, I haven't been able to wrap my head around it. I know everybody says it's okay, it comes back in two weeks on the eleventh, that it's okay, but I don't understand it. I'm just being very honest.
So the idea behind this is for the board to have a public hearing so that you can hear kind of what the proposed changes are, and then make recommendations or express concerns. Also, as we mentioned, we are not completely through the meet and confer process at this time, so I believe Mr. Munoz mentioned that one of the positions, the first one on the list, is not correct as it's listed here, because we did have some changes through our negotiations with SEIU that have changed that. And so hopefully, when we bring it back on the eleventh, we'll all be in agreement, and that will be the final proposal.
So do we have to do anything today, then?
I can, you're not approving it.
I can attempt to explain it in a way that maybe might make more sense for people. This item today is about budget adjustments, it's about dollars, which is why it requires a four-fifths vote, because it is adjustment to the budget outside of the formal budget process. Then what comes back, so hypothetically, if the board did decide to take the item as presented today, today would be greenlighting the budgetary changes, the dollars and cents that would be necessary to effectuate the subsequent personnel changes, which are not actually before the board today. So if the board want, if it was the board's decision to punt, for lack of a better word, on the budget adjustments associated with position changes today, I think, and Marcos, correct me if you disagree, I think the board could do that. When, if, when those then do come forward, they will require a four-fifths.
It seems to make the most amount of sense to wait until-
I think that's, I mean, that's up to the board, it's just, it's, and again, it's-
That's the way I'm going with it, is, and I do, I do want it to be a four-fifths vote, because I think that the whole board should have their eyes on this and be very-
Well, right.
Aware of how we're proceeding and everything.
So all of the-
Not that all of the ideas are not either needed, some, but I think there may be some good refinement in the meeting for moving up to that point.
May I ask a question? Wouldn't some of the changes affect the budget, then? If our meeting for changes, it would affect the budget? That's my question.
So to be clear, and all, again, all budget changes of this nature outside of the budget process will require a four-fifths. The changes to the position control list do not require a four-fifths, the budgetary changes do.
Right. But the budgetary changes, yes, I hear it, hear it.
Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Andrea.
Yeah.
Thank you, Andrea.
I'm just, I'm just of the position on this one thing, that I would love for it to come back with the, with it finalized, and then with a four-fifths vote, so that we all understand fully.
Could we go ahead and just vote on that now to push it to next meeting, if the other supervisors would entertain that?
Chair, can I ask a clarifying question? Are you referring to just the public works reclassification, or are you referring to all of the personnel changes?
Just the public works reclassifications.
Okay.
That's what I was asking for. Yeah.
So I think that, Marcos, if this makes sense to you, when, when, if and when the board makes a motion on this item, it can be stipulated that budgetary changes associated with those reclassifications are not being voted on today, and will come back at a subsequent meeting.
Also, the deletions, that's all part of the monetary-
So not just the reclassifications? I thought that was Marcos.
Reclassification and deletions.
Of just public works.
Just the public works ones.
Yeah. Would somebody like to make that motion?
It will be included in the motion at the end.
Yeah, I don't know if, yeah, I think that that can just be clarifying part of-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I have one more question. There was discussion on the park on Mountain Ranch. Because mentioned, let's talk about that a little bit later. Did we want to discuss that now, or wait till we look at direction for next year?
You're saying you got a quote for thirty thousand, but you think you should put thirty-five thousand toward it, just in case we have some issues?
So we received an engineer's estimate at thirty thousand dollars. That is not the actual quote to do the work, that's just an engineer's estimate, so I did want to give it.
So you haven't got a bid for it yet?
We haven't received a bid.
Typical, just with the engineer and the engineering and the cost on it, thirty thousands a minimums. So you're absolutely right, thirty-five thousand plus these days, and that's if they aren't busy.
I do have a couple of options.
Unless you've got somebody working up there on them that's willing to do a lower bid legitimately.
You know, it's a community need, and I think once we have, you know, the blessing of the board, we put it out there, and this is, you know, it's a critical part of Mountain Ranch, and many things will not happen.
Well, we are a critical county as a whole, and, yeah.
Absolutely.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars a gommit in District Two and last of the years for parks.
And I get that.
And, you know, and it is needed.
We have parks. We have parks in District Two, a lot of parks. And, you know, I'm not asking for beautification projects, I'm asking for a health and safety issue to keep it open and keep the community safe.
I understand that, fully.
Yeah. We don't have any parks in one and five.
I'd love to help you get some.
But here's why I'm on it.
After we spend it on the rest of the board.
I'm in favor of going out and getting the bids, get a bid and then come back to us with the bids. I know it's, if it's only going to be thirty, thirty-five thousand, maybe forty thousand, that's not above what you guys could go out and do, but I think that, without bringing it back to the board, but I think at this point, I think if we use some bids and then bring it back to the board, and we all have a conversation on it, and where the funds are going to come from, and how and what, so that's what I'd be in favor of. I don't know about the rest of the board.
I appreciate that.
I agree with you, and I think that it's hugely important, and I think it needs to be done quickly, so if we could get-
Just to clarify, if this is roughly a thirty thousand dollar public project, this is not something that typically has to go out to bid, period, much less come to the board for a ward, but if the board's direction-
Okay, you're right, it doesn't have to go out to bid, and I was trying to say, it's not above what admin can do, and it doesn't, so we need some costs that somebody could do, going to do the work, and then bring it back and have a conversation, where the money's going to come from.
Sure, I'll definitely, we'll reach out to several different companies and get some quotes and bring it back.
On them, are you good?
Thank you.
Yeah, otherwise, if it's going out for bid, it could be months before you, yeah.
Teresa, I have a question on that. We're supposed to be getting a parking update, and is that going to be also including CIP projects for existing projects, existing parks in the county that we are responsible for? Because we can't keep continuing to do the one-off and then drag it, like, we-
So Supervisor Follendorf, yes, we are bringing back the Parks Master Plan on March eleventh. Part of the plan does propose improvements for each of the county-owned parks within the master plan, so that will be coming to your board.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're doing this, I get the safety and health issue, but, you know, we, and that obvious thing, there's things that should have been dealt, and that obvious thing, there's things that should have been dealt with at that level, and then brought, it's probably, I mean, I'm not trying to, Marcos, I know you're trying to piece all of this together to make us all happy, but I think it just goes back to what I keep bugging you and Teresa about, like, where are we at with some of this stuff?
So that plan will be coming back. I'm going to be quite frank, I'm not sure that the plan identifies things like the septic systems in the parks and the age of those, and what we're looking at as far as potential failure. So that may be something that we would want to have our facilities folks take a look at when those systems were put in and what that looks like, and when we might expect to have to replace some of those things.
Let's open the can of worms. We're setting up the Rowan Cloud Elementary School.
I know, I know, I know, that's why-
We could spend another five hundred million dollars up there.
So, that's, but that's why I'm trying to group it back, like, we need to, we can have that as long as it's coming here in the near future, and then we can dive into all that fun stuff, but, yes, I am open to what they're saying, just because they're going to be at need, I think it's related to safety and health.
Yeah.
But going forward, I think we need to stay on track of why we did what we did, because we all have, we are all very invested in this, and have, especially in these other districts that want and need things. Get off.
Back to you, Marcos.
All right, so as I mentioned at the top of this presentation, twenty-five, twenty-six, and it's not just us, I'm seeing it in several different counties, it's going to be a much more difficult year to come in at the same amount that we came in this year. And so going into it, our process and our timeline, we will be sending out instructions by the end of this week, on here I put by March third, which is Monday, to departments. And then we will have meetings with the departments in April, and we're looking at having the budget meeting June tenth through June twelfth of this year, again, with the budget hearing in September, and this is a collaborative process with the departments. But here is, here is part of the issue that we are seeing, is revenue in general is flattening out. So when we look at the last five years, as you can see, we did have revenue increasing, but these last two years has been relatively flat, and that is for our sales tax, our TOT tax, our excise tax, and our Prop 172. We do have a couple that are trending upwards. We do have property tax trending upwards, that's that orange line on top, and then VLF, we do see also trending forward. So when looking at it, and these are just forecasted numbers based off of trends, I know it's a little dangerous sometimes to use forecasted numbers, but I wanted to put some numbers out there. If we continue at the property growth, we anticipate about seven hundred thousand dollars in new property tax. And again, during the budget process, these numbers will be shored up. Right now, these are just estimates. We are anticipating VLF growth and A-87 growth. So we're looking at about new revenue of about one point eight four million dollars, with all other revenues remaining flat. When we look at our expenditure side of it, in this upcoming year, we were notified that unfunded liability is going up one point oh four million dollars. So that is an expense we are going to see, with the general fund portion being approximately five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that. And then, of course, there's natural progressions, merits, longevities, COLAs, that is something we were anticipating. When you add those together on the personnel side, we are seeing an increase in expenditures of two million dollars. So again, we had one point eight four in new revenue and two million dollars in expenditures on the personnel side alone. So we are just over on the expenditures compared to new revenue when it comes to salaries and benefits, which means everything else, we are not going to see additional revenue to cover the costs. So when we're looking at insurance, we know insurance doesn't go down, it typically goes up. Utilities, we are not anticipating that to stay flat, we do anticipate that to go up. There are uncontrollable costs, which we can't control, that will still go up. We are seeing software and hardware across the county and all departments seeing double-digit increases. We are also, one thing that I will be recommending is a status quo services and supplies budget, a hard line on that status quo, but what that does mean is because costs are going up, if I ask the departments for a status quo budget, they're essentially cutting something else back in their budget to hit that status quo line. So even though I say status quo, it is asking the departments to cut that line to hit that status quo number, so I do want to be clear about that. The economy remains uncertain, so yes, I did give you some forecasted numbers, but as we see what's going on at the state and what's going on at the federal, that right now is the number. Over this next month, we are going to try and get more accurate costs, but the economy is uncertain. Inflation, we are still seeing, we're still seeing those costs, as software we just spoke about. The revenues have flattened, and that large increase is to unfunded liability. And for unfunded liability, PERS does put out a number each year. It did go up over a million dollars this year, next year the unfunded liability is six hundred thousand versus the year after that, it'll be about five hundred thousand. So this was a big year where it did jump. So what is admin recommending? We, again, are recommending a status quo budget for services and supplies. Again, that means cutting somewhere else to maintain that status quo. We are requesting any CIPs or capital assets, those are one-time expenditures, so we do want to fund those out of the capital account. We're requesting no new personnel unless attached to any funding or attached to mandates. And then, one thing we would like to look at, if the board's okay with, is moving departments out of the general fund that aren't taking a general fund draw. So for example, building is fee-funded, environmental health is also funded by other revenue fees, and there is a little nineteen ninety-one realignment in there, but moving them outside of the general fund so we can get a clear picture of what is specifically general fund versus what is not. And so that is admin's recommendation, so we already spoke about the first two here, and that was direction on mid-year budget and adjustments. So now, what I'm looking for is any direction for twenty-five, twenty-six that the board would like to give. One area I didn't touch on, but I am looking for direction, is the TOT distribution, whether or not, I know we just talked about Parks and Recs coming back on the eleventh, this last year we did put money towards Parks and Recs the last two years, and so the question is, do we want to hold off on the TOT discussion until June, so after, I believe, the chamber spoke earlier today, to next year's budget?
Supervisor Toppin, no.
Yeah, I think we can give you all the direction you want right now, but I envision this coming June, we're going to be in the same position, maybe not even worse position than we were last year with the state, and their deficit and their budget moving forward. Everything disaster happened down south, he just gave a hundred and twenty-five million dollars to offset the mortgage payments down there, you don't know what's going to be happening, and if they have a deficit that they had to cover from this year, carry it next year, I think we're not going to know anything until, like we did last year.
We won't know until November.
Yeah, until September, at least, mid-September, so we can give you all the direction you want, but it may not mean anything, at least until we get to that point, and see what's going to be forecasted. We'll have somewhat of a forecast, hopefully sometime in mid-June, for what the state's going to do- going to do with their budget. And although it was complete opposite of what happened last year, we were still in dilemma on what's going to happen. And so I envision that happening again this year.
Yeah, and plus they're putting more money towards fighting the federal.
Federal, yeah. And then you don't know what they're going to do, does the state? I mean, I think it's all, yeah. I don't even know if we're going to be status quo.
So with that said, I think the direction we're looking for is that with all of this uncertainty that we're all very cognizant of, is that I believe my office would like direction to go into the next year's budget very conservatively. If it's a better picture than we believe it's going to be, we could always add things, but we would like permission to be fairly strict with departments about not escalating budgets or not putting in extra things when we don't really know what's going to be happening at the state or federal level. Is that fair to say, Mr. Munoz?
That is, yes.
At least on the general fund aspect of it. And then some of the other non-general fund, you, you don't know what the federal's going on in federal. So just conservative is yes, absolutely. That's where I live.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna echo the federal. We've got, I think, two weeks until we even know where the feds are going to be and they are using that as leverage right now to cut services. So I don't think it's just now the current service is, well, no, it'll be current services and whether that'll hit next fiscal year or if it will hit this year. And so I think I've talked to staff about concerns on what that looks like and what the counties will be holding back if the state doesn't cover it. And I don't mean just, I just state of California, I mean nationwide, each state, like, what are they going to be having to come up with to support not just counties but local cities with some of those? And so I think I would be supporting being very, very conservative because there's a lot of questions coming out and it's gay.
Yeah, and, and I'll tell you, Teresa, I think you were around back in, not here, but in, in government back in 2009, 2010, when we had the recession and people don't understand, a lot of people in the room here do, but public out there didn't see, is that when you pay your property taxes, all that money goes to the state and then the state brings it back to us. We usually get about 17%. Back then, I think we got 12% one time. We got 13% one time. So, so, and we have to deal with it. We're, we're the bottom, like you were saying, the state does it to us and the schools. Yeah, here it is. Like, look, we know we owe you 17%. We're giving you 12% now and when we get our money back, we'll pay you back the rest later. Sometimes, sometimes. The school history's gone way later, but. But that's, that's very possible we could be looking at something like that again. I'm just being totally conservative here because living through some of that, yeah.
Does that give you enough direction if we just say, keep it very, very conservative?
And I think the TOT deserves another discussion, maybe after Parks and Rec presents.
Perfect. So would you like TOT just brought back in June or would you like it a standalone item before then, after Parks and Recs?
It's up to the board. I can't actually be in that discussion, so it's really up to the four of you.
Well, if you're going to stand alone, let's make it a standalone. That way you aren't in and out on.
Perfect, thank you.
The whole discussion.
Thank you.
That was just my opinion. Anybody else agree with it?
No, I, I support that. I was actually just going to say, thank you, Marcos, for all your hard work. I know this has not been easy for you and your staff, so thank you.
And you and everyone else that comes into this. I mean, it's a county-wide effort, so it's awesome that you're able to organize it. A little with Ms. Hitchcock, I guess.
Thank you, Marcos. Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Teresa. Jamie's a part of it, I guess.
So should we pull out the public works reclassifications and deletions first?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. That's how, right? If you're, if you're okay with me making a motion. Do we want public comment? Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any online?
None, not online.
So we have a motion.
I, I, I would like to make a motion to approve the mid-year budget changes minus the public works reclassifications and deletions at this time to be brought back forward with, in the next meeting and with a little more clarity on what those are and the meeting prefers hopefully behind us at that time. So we move together and hand and glove.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Supervisor Follendorf seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Marcos, very much. So with that, we'll move on to our final supervisor announcements.
In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of a local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Supervisor Stopford, can we start down with you? Come this way.
Mr. Hoppery, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Top.
That's it.
That's it. Supervisor Topanelli.
Yeah, there was a group of people here earlier during public comment that brought up the Broadway and this, and the travel there and the speeds going on there. I, I would like to request that we put the speed sign that we have that shows the speed limit and then it flashes how fast you're going. Put it somewhere out there on Broadway so that we get some type of help right now for them. Maybe it seems to slow people down when they see that. And then I'll meet with you, Micah, and we can go over some options that we have. Possibly, it could be a CIP project next year. But if we could at least get that out there and, and maybe go from there. Thank you.
Supervisor Follendorf.
I'll let Autumn do the update, but there was an invite for all of us in alternate to have a meeting in April about the future of CAMA and I think staff should be included in that and I will pass it over to Autumn because I was not able to make it that day, but.
So like everything in my new role I'm playing catch-up, I attended the CAMA meeting, which stands for Calvers Amador McCallum River Authority. And this is a group that formed back in 2011, maybe? And it's, it hasn't been as active as it should and so we kind of need to all get in one room and decide what the strategic plan really is, what the goals are. And we're looking at organizing this group or dissolving the group. So it's going to be an all hands on deck and hopefully you two can be there to bring some light into the history of it.
I can be there.
I'll remind you. I also attended the CSAC Institute for New Supervisors. This was two days in Sacramento. It was a great resource to my freshman class of supervisors. We learned a lot about what's available to us, what they're doing for us at the state level and at the federal level and making sure that we as newbies are dotting our i's and crossing our t's. I wanted just to mention two events in District Two that highlight the community spirit that makes a lot happen. We recently just had a fundraiser in McCallum Hill for the elementary school and we raised $16,000 to fully send every fifth and sixth grader to science camp and that was completely community-driven. That was Saturday. And then on Sunday, we had a seed exchange in Mountain Ranch. This is a really neat event that happens every year. Community donates garden seeds. They have speakers about gardening, farming, making food. It's a really neat event that people learn a lot. Susan was there recording it, so you can catch it on PATV and I'm very proud of that community group.
Thank you. Thanks, Supervisor. I, on the 20th, attended the luncheon at the Murphy's Senior Center and gave a little speech and then followed that with a meeting with the Calvers Fire Safe Council. And just wanted to let everybody know that this year Nevada Conservancy is bringing their board meeting to Ironstone on the 5th and 6th and the general public is invited to take a tour of all the fuel breaks that they have done in the Upper Highway 4 corridor. And then there will be a meeting on the 6th, their general board meeting will be at Ironstone as well. And do we have anything else to report? Adam Hitchcock, County Council? Stacy?
Do we want to share about the Rosie the Riveter?
Yeah, would you mind saying what that is?
So the Senator's office has reached out and is looking to recognize those that were part of the Rosie the Riveter during World War II. And there's going to be a resolution to recognize these women that were a part of the program. And I believe the recognition is going to be in March, I think March 24th, I'll have to look at the date. We've reached out to several of the veterans districts, PATV to do an announcement to try to find some community members that were part of that.
And when we did the.
Rosie the Riveter, I'm sorry.
Rosie the Riveter, yeah.
And so they're looking for that. So, so I think Autumn is, could be Rosie from, from the board.
Yes. No, actually, when we did the proclamations at Foothill, there were, we gave six proclamations to the centenarians and I think three of them worked in the factories during the war making planes. So that's what, that's why I sent it.
And we have contacted Foothill Village regarding those residents as well already too, so.
Stacy's got the word out. That's great. Thank you all. So we'll end the meeting at 12:10. Thank you.